Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, April 17th, 2024 regular scheduled board meeting, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. So everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapata.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we humbly come before you today. We acknowledge you for who you are. And this morning, we pray a special prayer for the family of Bob Graham, who recently passed, who served as the 38th governor of Florida from 1979 to 1987, and was a United States Senator of Florida from 1987 to 2005. We pray for peace for his family, a special peace in their hearts like only you can give them. And we just pray that in your holy name. And we pray today, we pray for Israel, we pray for their protection, and we pray for all of the innocent people that have been affected by this war. And we pray for our United States military men and women that are serving. We, a special protection, Lord, lead them and guide them, protect them. We just thank you for their lives, and we bless their lives. We pray for their families, that you give them a special peace, Lord, as they are serving during these times. And we pray for protection over the state of Florida. We pray for protection over the United States of America. And we ask you to bless this meeting in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. Now, it's our pleasure to present the Eighth Annual Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award, especially because this year we have a very special recipient that really needs no introduction. However, Commissioner Kemp is going to tell us a little bit about the award and recognize this outstanding recipient.
Thank you. It's, um, good morning, everybody. In January 2017, the Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved the creation of the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award to honor an individual or group dedicated to preserving the county's natural resources. So I want to thank members of the Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program, near to all of our hearts, who reviewed the nominations, and they recommended the recipient. I believe we have a few members here today, and the committee is just so dedicated, so please stand as I call your name. Joe Guidry, Jan Smith, Sally Thompson, and Russ Kahn. And thank you all so much for your just continued and long-term dedicated service to ELAP. So now I'm proud to present the recipient of the 2024 Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award. He's certainly someone we know all very well. Commissioner Stacy White, can you please join me at the podium? I think you should also just introduce your mother for a second here before we.
Absolutely. And in true Stacy White fashion, I have a few handwritten remarks here and definitely plan to acknowledge my mother there as well. But, but my mom, Marilyn McMurray, has joined me this morning. Thanks for being here, Mom.
Great. I know when you care about the environment, so often it's something that's passed to you by your parents. And so it's an honor to have you here this morning as well. And good morning, welcome. It's fantastic seeing you again. A fifth-generation Floridian and Hillsborough County native, Stacy White, has repeatedly demonstrated his love for Hillsborough County's natural treasures. Beginning as a child, and I know I heard much about this, and not in a bad way, it's great. And most notably, as a member of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners from 2014 until his retirement in 2022, let me just touch on a few of those accomplishments. And it was great to have these memories this morning. Commissioner White led a successful local initiative to get Congress to authorize the necessary studies for the Little Manatee River to be designated as a scenic river under the Federal Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. And I know we all care so much about the Little Manatee River and how beautiful it is with all its elbows and curves and its natural movement of that river. And thank you so much for doing that. He promoted and led the way in securing record ELAP funding levels that were the highest in decades. And we know in this county, 79% of the voters have supported that program most recently, and want their, want to have these lands recognized, want to have that wildlife habitat. And I can remember as a commissioner, how you worked really hard for that. We all had our little ELAP maps that we were looking for wildlife connectivity, and thank you so much. It was really, you really moved the program along. He championed the planning and funding for Pebble Creek, a conservation park in Riverview. He promoted an initiative to use the county's tree fund to plant native vegetation on county properties, which created habitat for birds and small wildlife, as well as a source for pollinators, which, as we know in this day and age, is so, so important. He served on the policy board of the Tampa Bay Estuary Program for his entire two terms on the Board of County Commissioners, including six years as vice chair, in addition to other boards and councils that protect the environment. Commissioner White, your service, dedication, and advocacy embodies the spirit of the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Conservation Award. You made our county a better place for everyone. And as part of this award, we have a beautiful framed photo for you. This is the Bullfog Creek Scrub Nature Preserve, which I know is very important and significant to you.
Beautiful.
In addition, we have a very nice plaque, and you'll be able to choose, you're going to have a roomful waffle here. In addition, we have a very nice plaque. You'll be able to also choose an enhancement project valued at $2,000 at a Hillsborough County nature area of your choice. The nature enhancement project is a courtesy of the county's late, great friend, and I know we both had relationships with him, what a wonderful person, Gus Munich. Also, your name is just the eighth placed on a permanent plaque that hangs in the case here on the second floor of County Center. So thank you for all your amazing work. Can you do both of those? Okay. And if we could have you share your thoughts.
Well, thank you very much. And I didn't get to take a look at Commissioner Kemp's script, so I may repeat a few things. Let me just start by addressing the folks behind me. Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commissioners, County Administrator Wise, County Attorney Beck. It's great to be here in the company of my former colleagues and my new friends on the B O C C. I championed the creation of this award alongside Jan Smith in 2017, and words cannot express what an honor it is to be the eighth recipient of this award. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that viewing this award process from the vantage point that I'm viewing it from today, I wish to thank William Yelverton and the staff that makes this happen. And really, it just, this award process runs like a well-oiled machine. While I'm tremendously honored, and it's nice to be recognized, and it's nice to recognize conservation champions each and every year, what I envisioned when I created this award with Jan back in 2017 is to showcase conservation. And it's nice to see conservation under the spotlight each year right around Arbor Day. Conservation's important because conservation lands provide recreational opportunities for our citizens, they enhance ecotourism opportunities, and because wildlife doesn't have a voice and therefore needs people to protect it without being asked. Out of Florida's 10 most populous counties, Hillsborough County ranks number one in the percent of local conservation lands, yet it only ranks number nine in total conservation lands. And that's because of a much higher percentage of state and federal conservation lands than the counties that rank ahead of us. And these statistics paint a powerful picture of the importance of our ELAP program, which has always enjoyed strong bipartisan support. And without it, we would have very little natural green space here in Hillsborough County. And like Commissioner Kemp said, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the late Gus Munich for supporting the conservation projects that take place each time there's an award recipient. Gus, who was a conservation legend in this county, gave a gift of, I believe it was $20,000 of his own money to the ELAP program to support that. And I've chosen some tree and vegetation plantings at our Fish Hawk Nature Preserve, and grateful to Gus for making that happen. I owe a debt of gratitude to our Conservation and Environmental Lands Management staff for the expert guidance they provide to the board and for all of the work they do. Of course, the ELAP Committee for all the hard work you do, not only related to this award, but just for conservation in general across the county. Joe Guidry, so great to see you. Joe was the inaugural recipient of this award, well-deserved. So great to have you here today, sharing in this. A good county commissioner, and everybody behind me knows this, a good county commissioner is only as good as the staff that he or she is surrounded by. So I want to give a heartfelt thanks to Megan and David for all of the years and the instrumental role that you played as a part of Team District Four when I was in office. I also want to thank my old friends. Audie Canny is here, Louis Betts, Travis on his team. I don't know whether or not Senator Lee is indeed here. Old friends are so important, and without these old friends, I wouldn't be standing here at this podium. So thank you for your support through the years. And last, but certainly not least, my family, my mom who's here with me today, my dad, who I believe is watching on television. Dad has always been an avid outdoorsman, fisherman, and he's made me the conservationist that I am. My mother-in-law, who's relocated up to the Smokies with us, my kids who are scattered about. And last, but certainly not least, my wife, who stayed back and is holding down the Ford at our home up in the Smokies. We're going to be down in Florida with the whole family here in just a couple of weeks for a college graduation, and didn't want to drag them on that long trip twice in a row. But it's such an honor, and thank you very much.
And now we have picture time, and if you'd like to invite others up that, from the ELAP family.
And Commissioner Kemp, before we do that, I know a couple commissioners want to say a few words. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you. Commissioner White, does my heart so good to see you. For those of you with a short-term memory, or you're new here to this board meeting, Commissioner White was my predecessor. He, in many ways, is a mentor to me, somebody I look up to in every way, and the best county commissioner in the history of District Four, including the one that's sitting here right now. And you are somebody that has conservative values more than just the environment when it comes to being prudence of taxpayer dollars and preserving and protecting conservative values, but also being a true statesman. I actually see Senator Lee in your background right there, and I see two great men who do the right thing for the people of their district regardless of special interests, regardless of anything that could be coming from outside chatter. You have always been a true champion and a statesman for Hillsborough County and the residents of District Four. I love you, buddy. You're my brother in Christ. Thank you for being here today.
Commissioner Cohen?
Commissioner White, it's wonderful to see you. First of all, congratulations on winning this very, very distinguished award that is really one of the most significant honors that can come from this board. I just could not let the moment pass without reflecting that during the two years we served together, I always appreciated not just your wisdom and your judgment, but the real classy demeanor that you brought to a lot of the different, very difficult issues that we embraced and maybe tangled over together. So I just want to thank you very much for always being such a thoughtful and deliberate and effective advocate for the community. It's very, very significant.
And Commissioner White, I want to echo those remarks. I can't say it any better than what Commissioner Owen and Cohen just said. It's an honor to serve with you, honored to call you a friend. You were a fierce advocate for your district. You know, the word statesman, classy, thoughtful come to mind. I was going to add gentleman to that. You fought for what you believed in, what was in your heart, you never strayed from that. And you just always held yourself to the best manner and the best standards. And I look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks at that same graduation. And go Gators.
We'll take these up, right? We take these up?
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for presenting the award, and congratulations once again, And now Commissioner Cohen will present our next proclamation.
Well, good morning, everybody. That's going to be a tough one to follow. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Amber Smith, the Government Affairs Regional Manager of the Southwest Florida Water Management District, to please join me at the podium. Good morning. Thank you for joining us today. Hillsborough County has countless, endless, boundless national resources. Our, you know what?
Hold on, one second. Yeah, if everybody could please be a little bit quiet as we mosey out of here. Thank you.
All right. Well, good morning. Thank you again, and thank you, Ms. Smith, for coming to the podium. Hillsborough County has countless natural resources, parks, wildlife, beautiful scenery, and especially our most treasured resource, which is water. We must do everything we can to conserve it. Hillsborough County and the Southwest Florida Management District do a phenomenal job providing clean drinking water, wastewater treatment, and reclaimed water services that enable our community to grow and prosper. I am pleased to present this proclamation for Water Conservation Month and Florida Water Reuse Week, and I'm going to briefly read what it says. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and fresh water is the most precious natural resource. And whereas since 1999, Hillsborough County has joined the state of Florida, including SWIFTMUD, in designating April as Water Conservation Month to teach residents ways they can help save Florida's water resources. And whereas water reuse conserves Florida's limited water resources, and Water Reuse Florida has designated May 12th through May 18th as Florida Water Reuse Week. In addition to encouraging Florida-friendly landscaping and its beneficial uses, Hillsborough County and SWIFTMUD promote water conservation through a wide variety of educational efforts, community outreach, water use restrictions, agency partnerships, and funding and construction of reclaimed water systems. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does declare April 2024 as Water Conservation Month. This is the beginning of the driest season in the year for us, so it's very important at this point that everyone continue to follow the restrictions we have in place. I'm going to ask Amber Smith to make a few comments before we present the proclamation.
Thank you, Commissioner, for highlighting this. As you mentioned, it's especially important this year. We're currently under a watershoreage order modified for Hillsborough Pinellas Pasco. And something also I want to be sure to emphasize is, of course, everyone plays a part in this, residents, businesses, and to that end as well, we recognize that actions that we take, including retrofits, can have a major impact. The Water Management District does have grants available. If this is something you're interested in, please feel free to take a look at the Wise Grants and apply for those, and we can talk to you about that at another time as well. But there's, there are resources available to help with this effort as well.
Thank you. And I just want to say 50% of the water that is used at home during the dry season is for lawn watering. So when you go from two days a week to one day a week, it makes a significant difference. And the reports that we're receiving at Tampa Bay Water tell us that Hillsborough County is doing the best job in the region of following the restrictions, enforcing the restrictions, and actually lowering our consumption during this time of the year. So it's really, really important for the next three months that we keep at it. But the good news is, is that for the first time this week at Tampa Bay Water, we actually saw a map that showed us moving out of drought conditions in this part of the state. So very, very significant. Let's keep at it for the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Bonnie, want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. We have one item that has been deferred to May 1st. This is Item A43. This is to approve the First Amendment to Cooperative Funding Agreement between the Southwest Florida Water Management District and Hillsborough County Water Resources for the North Hillsborough Aquifer Recharge Program Phase II Project. We have two items that have been removed from consent for a separate vote. The first one is Item A3 by Commissioner Wostol. This is to approve and execute the second modification to the agreement between Hillsborough County and the East Tampa Business and Community Development Alliance to extend the expenditure and expiration dates by one year to allow time for completion of two remaining rehabilitation projects and two demolition and reconstruction projects. Item A15 has been removed by Commissioner Kemp. This is to approve an agreement with Low Carbon America Corporation for demonstration pilot for carbon capture. The Board directed staff to review proposal from Low Carbon America Corporation for the installation, operation, testing of a unit process at the county's Falkenburg Waste-to-Energy Facility. We have one item that has been removed from consent for discussion or questions. This is by Commissioner Wostol. This is Item A7. This is to approve and execute the Community Development Block Grant CARES Act Public Facilities Grant Funding Agreement and accompanying form of mortgage promissory note and land use restriction agreement between Hillsborough County and the University Area Community Development Corporation in the amount of $303,377 to assist the agency with preparation, prevention, or spread of the future pandemic disease. List of items for scheduled for a time certain. The first one is Item D1. This is at 10 o'clock. This is conduct a public hearing and consider enactment of an ordinance generally providing for the renewal and levy of a referendum on the half-cent local government infrastructure SRTAX, known locally as a community investment tax, or CIT. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve the changes?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, like Commissioner Owen, second, Commissioner Myers, on the changes. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. The Board of Going to the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members. Whoever has requests at the same time, when you address the Board, that comments are not directed at board members or staff, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. When you come forward, please state your name. I'll speak clearly into the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. We do have 23 people that have signed up for public comment, so if everyone is present and takes the entire three minutes, we will not get to everyone. The first three speakers this morning, Brooke Ward, followed by Jorge Aguilar, and then
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you again for the opportunity to address this board. It really is a blessing to be able to have our voices heard in this forum. My name is Brooke Ward, and although I am the Senior Florida Organizer with Food and Water Watch, I am also part of a much larger, community-wide Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition, representing 12,000 Hillsborough residents and comprised of nearly 20 community organizations, including Central Florida Jobs with Justice, Florida Rising, League of Latin American Citizens, League of Women Voters of Hillsborough County, Sierra Club, Jen Cleo, Florida Student Power Network, Lyuna, several small business owners, and many others, some of whom you will hear from here today. We have been coming to you for a year now, asking for your help to combat TECO rate hikes and work on an affordable energy plan for Hillsborough County. Last time we were here, we offered a litany of valid arguments against a proposed carbon capture pilot program, a program that was brought to this board at the behest of a corporation, not by a suggestion of the county administration. Although we know the 60-day pilot program is moving forward at this time, we reiterate our concerns and ask that no further county time or money is spent extending this project past the 60-day pilot. It's a distraction from real solutions and frankly, a gross waste of time and money. While this board was discussing carbon capture two weeks ago, Tampa Electric filed to increase the cost of energy once again. If accepted by the PSC, the average customer's base rate will increase by $20 to $30 per month over the next three years, equating to hundreds of dollars more annually for each household. TECO has chosen to use a cost analysis that is unfair and harmful to residential customers in order to benefit in order to benefit large-scale industrial and corporate users, thus putting a higher energy burden on the residential customer class. 84% of TECO customers, nearly 700,000 people, live in Hillsborough County, meaning you have a stake in this fight. And that is why we urge you to fight for Hillsborough residents by intervening on our behalf in the TECO base rate case at the PSC, oppose higher rates, and call for several accessible in-district hearings. Hillsborough families, our families, are asking for your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Next three speakers, Jorge Aguilar, followed by David Coleman, and then Todd Randolph. Good morning, sir.
Hello, good morning. Thank you again, Chairman Hagan and County Commissioners. My name is Jorge Ilad, and I'm here also on behalf of Food and Water Watch and the Affordable Energy Coalition. We believe that this Commission can and must use all the tools in its tool belt to protect the residents from the heavy energy burden that TECO and its energy rates continue to place on Hillsborough families. It's really quite common for counties to intervene in PSC hearings when utilities pass particularly egregious rate hikes or have service issues. And we believe the astronomical rate hikes over the past few years warrant the county's involvement in this case. So we also believe the county needs to implement a long-term affordable energy and resiliency plan to really help residents lower their electricity bills. Many municipalities across the state have committed to a comprehensive energy efficiency program, building retrofits, land use policies, meant to help residents really offset the high cost of electricity while preparing for the expected challenges from a changing climate. To date, however, the county has been hesitant to really launch a comprehensive plan, seemingly because it is favoring small, one-off projects here and there that ultimately will not meet the moment for what the county really needs. Just yesterday, a couple of days ago, the county staff hosted a really poorly-attended public flooding vulnerability meeting, for instance. And just, right, in the past couple of weeks, the Commission has taken a position on this very questionable gambit on a pie-in-the-sky carbon capture project on a trash-burning facility, a project whose contract insinuates that tens of millions of taxpayer dollars from county residents could be spent on this project in the future. So I'm always reminded what my grandma always said, "How can you know where you're going if you don't have a clear destination?" And right now, Hillsborough County does not have a north star for what it wants to achieve around affordable energy or even climate resiliency. So we believe one-off projects like this carbon capture one have detrimental opportunity costs, given that the financial resources and staff time being devoted to trash incineration could be so much better spent on projects that will truly help the county families address the real issues. That's why many of us in the community are asking that you take the first step today by legally intervening in opposing TECO's rate hikes and passing a comprehensive affordable energy plan for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is David Coleman, followed by Todd Randolph, and then Ashton Maddox.
My name is Dave Coleman, and Hillsborough residents are not outside noise. As always, hotel vouchers or child abuse. There might be another way. Last Saturday, I attended the Mayor's Homeless and Affordable Housing Outreach. The emphasis was on banks getting people mortgages. There was also a table on homeless initiatives where only two points of entry were discussed. I asked the mayor about a shelter, and she said that after some holdups, the city should have 300 to 500 beds through Hope, but that actually, it's the county's job, and I'm not sure what that mandate is. I'll have to look into it. Yesterday, I attended a presentation by CareForTheHomeless.org on how Houston dropped their homeless population 60% over 10 years. They skipped the shelter idea that I have been begging for and moved folks directly into permanent housing, which includes support systems. They literally walk into homeless camps and 65% agree to be housed and are in homes that very day. It's some local funding, federal money to subsidize, and the client's own disability money often. This is, and the GOP should love this, they go to private landlords to locate properties for rent and then clear the path for residency. I also attended the opening of the splash pad at the UH CDC. What a great thing for our kids in the neighborhood this summer, as is the grocery truck in the parking lot every Friday feeding the long line of our local people. You want all that gone, even before the flu presentation on that Thursday evening. Words of no dollars for transportation and infrastructure in the urban core, eastern and south county come first, were heard in this room. Public schools are going charters and no funding increases, and don't even think about coming for a millage. We are taking an axe to the budget, so it seems the least funding to affordable housing, to transportation, and our homeless. Slash out the approved federal money for Boulevard Study and enterprising Latinas, a call to cut the county health card out, further ending support for our most needy. What was and who did that 620K to study our health card paid to an international company? So many ways this Board has hoarded its 2.3 billion in savings while trying to slash programs. The school board came here two weeks ago, fund our kids, rethink how we can deal with the homeless. The Jeremiah Action Meeting last night spoke for itself. Over 1,000 people spoke for affordable housing, as did the public input on our future land use meetings. Housing and transportation were the number-one issues. Now, since you are throwing our kids under the bus, I guess we have to add public schools to our list against the county board. Hillsborough can do better.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Todd Randolph, followed by Ashton Maddox.
Hello, good morning. My name is Todd Randolph. I'm a local resident that lives three miles away down the street here. I've involved in community organizations. I've been involved with Sierra Club for well over 10 years. Tried to do my part to be involved in our society and make it for the better. I am still concerned in seeing Item A15, the carbon capture project, moving forward. I typically like to speak on the secular aspects of carbon capture technology and its failures in regards to financial feasibility, technical issues, and there's many case studies just showing that it doesn't work, and from a common sense standpoint, it is kind of clear that it doesn't work. Personally, and on a much broader concept, it's really just the way that mankind is choosing to deal with current issues in a way that places human engineering or the pride of mankind's ego and its intellectual abilities above what we should be thinking about in regards to our actions that have led us to this point to consider carbon capture. If we're going to have a serious discussion on carbon capture, it involves preserving the best carbon capture, which is by God, nature, the Almighty, has the best carbon capture all around us here in Florida, and much of that is being raised and paved so we can pursue our own interests without regards to the impact of it. And that's having the most detrimental impact. That deeper note, I do believe the Board should consider all aspects of what carbon capture really means, what is it? I'm also wanting to bring up the point that I'm hearing about TECO rate hikes, once again, being increased, and in particular, for energy producers as myself. This is going to double the connected rate that I pay to connect to TECO, and there becomes a very feasible point where I don't become a customer anymore and become off-grid. And when you have a movement like that, it can start impacting the other remaining TECO customers. It's a very real thing that can happen when they start pushing it too far.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. Ashton Maddox, followed by Abby Schnittker.
Good morning. My name is Ashton Maddox. I'm here on behalf of both Tampa Rate Hikes Coalition and GenCleo. I'm here to address two crucial matters, both the carbon capture project and the proposed rate hikes by TECO. So let me begin by stating that while the concept of the carbon capture project does hold promise, it's the execution that falls short. When the rates of carbon dioxide emissions exceed that of storage, it renders the project ineffective, such as the one proposed in Hillsborough County. So I ask you to please consider other effective options to address climate change. Now, however, the main reason I am here speaking in front of you all today is because of the rate hikes that TECO is proposing for all of its customers. They decided to increase the base rate for customers by $20 to $30 over the course of three years, regardless of their energy use. Their proposal for this increase in money is to build new offices and corporate centers due to increasing sea level rise. And these hikes come at a time when TECO customers already bear one of the highest energy costs nationwide. So rather than burdening consumers further, TECO should redirect its profits toward investments and clean energy initiatives. Furthermore, there is a pressing concern for customers who utilize minimal to no energy yet still face a staggering 50% increase in their bills. This disproportionate burden, just to stay on the grid, exacerbates financial strain on households that are already trying to be energy-independent. With all this said, I urge you to fight for Hillsborough County residents by intervening on our behalf in the TECO base rate case at the Public Service Commission. Please oppose these higher rates and call for multiple accessible in-district hearings. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Abby Schnittker, followed by Joseph Robinson.
Good morning. My name is Abby Schnittker. I attend USF, and I plan to graduate with my bachelor's degree in communications next month. I've been studying media literacy for the past three years, so the issue I'd like to respond to today is Chair Hagan's comments about misinformation at the meeting on April 3rd. At the last Board meeting, Chair Hagan said, and I quote, "That other than the fact that this Board is not pursuing the Food and Water Watch agenda, there wasn't a single valid reason stated during public comment to oppose this initiative," and that's a fact. I did some research, and I can tell you that while Food and Water Watch doesn't have an agenda, it does have a mission statement, according to its website, "to fight for safe food, clean water, and a livable climate for all of us." But regardless of its mission, citizens like me don't work for Food and Water Watch. I'm a member of Florida Student Power Network, a Florida native, and most importantly, a Hillsborough County resident who values spreading actual facts and not biased half-truths. But if the Board won't be following an agenda of a safe climate for all, I'll address the issue in terms of numbers. As the county staff members who spoke about low carbon at the last meeting stated, the power plant produces 600 tons of carbon daily. This carbon capture would eliminate 0.2% of that every day, and I rounded that number up. But maybe you're thinking this specific carbon capture program is an anomaly, so let's take a look at CCS programs on the whole. Nine large-scale carbon capture projects have been funded by the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, yet only two remain operational. These plants have still created massive amounts of uncaptured emissions, and no power plant attempting to use carbon capture and storage has achieved its goal. Despite the facts I just stated proving carbon capture to be a blatant waste, $28 million of TECO's requested rate increase is allocated to studying it further. Just to clarify, TECO wants to raise our electricity bill base rates by $20 to $30 over the next three years and use our money to pursue this futile program. Commissioners, I ask that you listen to your constituents, or at the very least, listen to the facts. We're urging you to fight for us by stopping the carbon capture program, opposing TECO's rate hikes, and switching to clean energy as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Robinson, followed by Elizabeth Brayden.
Morning, Mr. Robinson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Do I have the air moan for a second? Take a look at this. This is the MBE... I'm speaking on Item B1. I'll be back on the public hearing on that one. Yes, look at this. Do you see that says minority business, construction spin by group, black folks, dismal? Now, this is a trend. It's getting worse. Look at another chart. This one really hurts me, because this is what I do for a living. Because MBE CCNA, Competitive Consultation Act, spin by group, black people ain't even on the blip. Do you see that? Maybe that word's up there is blocking it. They put it up there somewhere around here, man. Give me some assistance, I'm getting old, man. This is getting ridiculous. Right here, it doesn't even move. Look, women are doing very well. Black people are getting jacked around, and I'm a professional engineer. Now, let me just, I start off with that to show you that's where you are. That's what you're doing. It's dismal. Now, I don't want to have to come back over here and bring the feds and everybody else over here and start investigating public corruption, contracting. Let me just say this, on this $671 million deal for Garni, I worked with Garni on Northwest Hillsborough Regional Treatment Plant out there, okay? I know all about what happened, and since they got a great standing ovation for it, I guess our firm gets a great standing ovation for working with them. Don't forget that. We were the minority black firm working with Garni on Northwest when everything went south, but we hung around. Don't have me tell me what I really know. 14% of 3.5 million is $503,000. They're only talking about 10% right now, but they said they're going to make it up. 10% is 359. The most underutilized group that are women, minority business, is black, is black, is black, and I'm black. I know that I'd be real black, that is, but I'm black. And that's the largest disparity on any of these charts. That's a problem. That's a serious problem. And finally, 14% of 671 million is $94 million. $94 million, Commissioners. There ain't enough minorities in this county to do it. And I don't want to be blackballed. I'm going to put this on the record with Garni and anybody else. I do not want to be blackballed in here. I will become an F-buy informant again. Now, I'm just telling you, let's try to take a serious look at spending these hundreds of millions of dollars. Let's start looking at black companies getting some opportunities. All hell is going to break loose. That's all I can tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Thank you. Elizabeth Brayden, followed by Dr. Rorlack.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Betsy Brayden. I live in Tampa. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here to support the community investment tax to stay at 0.25% for public school infrastructure. 90% of students go to public schools. Any decrease is a dereliction of duty and shows this Board doesn't believe in the future of our children. I'm also here to support affordable housing. I went to the HOPE meeting of churches last night at the Bible-based church. Commissioners were invited to speak about affordable housing. According to HOPE, their mission is affordable housing and combating homelessness. Two of our county commissioners pledged to continue to fund affordable housing at $10 million a year, as they have done for the last four years until, unfortunately, last year. I highly commend these two commissioners, but one commissioner said that he voted against it because he didn't see the budget and would not take the pledge. He needs roads in his district. The pastor pointed out that there are plenty of unsheltered in his district, and he's hurting his own constituents. It reminded me of the story of the Grinch. This Commissioner Grinch went into a church full of so-called activists and told them roads are more important than roads are more important than people. But with the story of the Grinch, his heart grew. He stopped being selfish. Will this Grinchy Commissioner's heart grow and support affordable housing for next year's budget? Or was this just a stunt to own the libs? Is cruelty the point?
All right, next three speakers. Dr. Bob Rorlack-Virtual, followed by Jeff Chernoff and Dr. Sarah Combs. Dr. Rorlack, are you on the line?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Bob. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
This is Dr. Bob Rorlack, President C. Good morning. I'm speaking on behalf of the Board of Directors for the Tampa Bay Chamber to encourage support and reauthorization of the CIT at its current implication. It's working. Our county is rapidly growing. Please, we encourage the Commission to make decisions with the long-term implications in mind. Every part of our county is experiencing rapid growth, especially the east side of the county. This is an investment in our future. We have to be planning out, not thinking of today, but with the long-term implication going forward. It was Commissioner Chalura, who is remembered as a visionary with the plan he put together for the current CIT, and we just ask that you all please be thinking in a visionary format of what our county needs, how we can be perceiving. Our schools need the investment in the long term so they can be supporting what's happening in our community as growth just continues to come here. So I just encourage your reauthorization of the CIT and its current makeup with the 25% supporting for schools. The position of the Board is that we reauthorize CIT in its current position. Thank you all very much for your service, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir. Jeff Chernoff, followed by Dr. Sarah Combs, and then Denise Herndon. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jeff Chernoff. I'm here as the co-chair for the Tampa Bay Chambers Policy Advisory Committee, a member of the Policy Council, as well as a member of the Board of Directors. 28 years ago, this body had visionary leadership and foresight to be able to authorize a CIT to be put on the ballot for 30 years and at 25% for schools. We have, as a native of Tampa and who remembers driving down 275, and the only time you had rush hour was at 6:00 PM on a Friday, we have grown by leaps and bounds to all corners. In my business as an insurance and financial advisor, I travel all parts of this county, and we are hurting. A lot of our residents, young professionals, are leaving because of our lack of transportation options. I would encourage you all to think really hard about reauthorizing the CIT at 30 years and at 25% funding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Sarah Combs, followed by Denise Herndon, and then Veda Virgil. Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners and County Staff. My name is Sarah Combs, and I'm the CEO at University Area CDC. And on behalf of the University Area Community, we just want to thank you for all the support that Hillsborough County has given us over the past 25 years. I'm here to speak on two agenda items, the first being item D1. I urge the Board to consider approving the CIT in its current form with at least 25% going to our schools. To lower the term or the percentage going to our schools is not in the best interest of our community and greatly inhibits the ability to obtain bonds to support the growing demands of our school, which then puts more pressure on property taxes for schools. Please invest in the education of our youth and the future of our community. The second item I'm here to speak on is Agenda Item A7, a community development block grant in the amount of about $300,000. Nearly a year ago, UACDC applied for this RFP and was selected to be awarded these funds made available by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development through the CARES Act. These federal funds are specifically for the prevention of the spread of disease, of pandemic diseases, which our program and our project aligns with, and these funds specifically cannot be pulled to be used on infrastructure or other projects. This grant will allow us to put in a much-needed turf field, expanded irrigation, two outdoor shelters, and a sun shade at Harvest Hope Park. We have over 200 young athletes that gather at Harvest Hope Park regularly to practice and compete in our get-moving athletic program, which is soccer, football, and cheerleading. These prevention programs are incredibly imperative to keep our kids safe and out of trouble, and it also gives us an opportunity to connect with the parents and build community. The way we are building community and the community development is working. In our district, crime has decreased by 10%, and it's due to our intentional programs and our partnerships, and our partnership with Hillsborough County. I believe this is the purpose of the community development block grant. With this grant, we also plan to construct two small shelters, serving as focal points for our community with gatherings, celebrations, and shared experiences. The grant will also allow us to expand our irrigation infrastructure to ensure proper maintenance of the surrounding green spaces. Additionally, we seek to install a sun shade, providing much-needed protection from the harsh Florida sun for our players, spectators, and our community residents who like to go to the park. In essence, the CDBG grant represents an opportunity to invest in the well-being and the development of our youth, the vitality of our community, and the sustainability of our shared spaces, our parks. I urge you to consider the profound impact that this grant will have on our community and to support our efforts to make Harvest Hope Park a beacon of hope, joy, and opportunity for generations to come. When Agenda Item A7 is pulled from the consent agenda, I please ask you to vote in support of approving this community development block grant. I will be happy to answer any questions at that time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Combs. Denise Herndon, followed by Veda Virgil, and then Diane Hart.
Hello, I'm Denise Herndon. I've been a Hillsborough County taxpayer through my property taxes for 29 years, and this CIT needs to stay at 25% for our schools. Our children are our future. You want to do this carbon capture, you say, "Oh, it's not costing Hillsborough County anything." It's costing the residents of Hillsborough County. Just because it doesn't cost Hillsborough County's budget doesn't mean it's not costing the Hillsborough County residents. And as Commissioner Kemp brought up, this is a beta test for the whole country. It has not been used anywhere, and as it has been brought up, at their full capacity when they're wanting it, is only going to produce a small portion of carbon capture. There's got to be other solutions for this. Take money from other places other than where it's really needed for our future. Our children are our future. Take it from Chad Kronister's budget for his name being on everything. He's patting himself on the back, "Oh, I returned $50 million," I believe the auditor said two weeks ago. That's him over-budgeting and I guarantee shorting his department somewhere down the line because nobody can $50 million return from a budget. And that's a lot of money that can be going for affordable housing, our children. You're in La La Land, thinking that this 1% millage rate is going to pass with the voters for the schools, and that doesn't take care of the buildings of the schools. And that's where you guys are thinking, "Oh, let's cut down that infrastructure. We need to help our children. Our children are our future." And if you commissioners don't understand this, you're just in La La Land. There's two of these commissioners that are up for reelection this year, and the only one I really see for the people right now is Commissioner Kemp. She's concerned about the 10,000 homes that you guys are approving. She can't do this by herself. She needs other commissioners to help. Well, we can get rid of one of them this year, and then in '26, there's a few more that's up. You guys, don't listen to us when you are here making decisions, but we constituents hear you, and we can answer through the voting. And if you don't want to do, it's not just a partisan type of thing, but it kind of is looking like it is, but just remember, you're up for a reelection, and don't forget the infrastructure for our children, because if they can't be comfortable learning for our future, what future do we have? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Veda Virgil, followed by Diane Hart, and then Susan Virginia Davis. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Diane Hart, CEO of East Tampa Business and Community Development Alliance. I'm speaking on A3. We're here this morning, and Veda Virgil is my housing director, so that's why we came up together. We're asking for an extension on the two homes that we're in the process of building. If you all understand, labor and supplies were extremely short. Not only that, we had a very difficult time trying to rehouse the individuals while their homes were being rebuilt. We had one family of a grandmother and, how many children? Four children, and her and her husband, which was an eight-person family that made it almost impossible to find someplace for them to go that we could afford. With a dollar amount of money that was in there for the relocation was not quite enough based on what our rents have done recently, so we had a very difficult time in relocating that family. We had some other problems in relocating the other family, but not quite as much. But housing cost is extremely high, and it was very hard to find anywhere for these families to go that was decent, affordable, and safe. And so we're asking for the additional time to be able to complete those houses. One of the houses is at 80%, one is at about 75%. So that's what we're asking this morning, and we're hoping that we can get a favorable vote to allow us the additional time to complete those two homes. We expect to be finished by July with those two. So that's our request this morning. Thank you very much for allowing us an opportunity to speak with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Susan Virginia Davis, followed by David Sinclair, and then Danny Kushmer. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate you letting me speak. I wanted to mention that there is 9,000 new houses that have been built this year, which automatically increases your revenue for the county and the school district. Please cut any waste that you find, like this carbon, and please cut your expenditures. Any waste you can find, please find it and look for yourselves. Have your employees also look for any waste, because most of us are living on fixed incomes, and many of us have never had a salary increase in the last 10 or 20 years. And many of us still are trying to live in our houses and not be taxed out of our houses. We live on a tight budget, many of us in your county. It looks like all taxes are going up this year, including my water service is also doubled. I didn't know about TECO going up terrible, too. So I'm against any taxes being added to all of our tight budgets. We are on a fixed income, and please do your fiduciary experience of looking for any waste in any department in any area. Please look for waste to cut them down. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. David Sinclair-Virtual. Mr. Sinclair on the phone.
Hey, David Sinclair, are you there?
Please continue.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can, thank you. David Sinclair, AL 434 Pebble Circle, Tampa. As a frequent participant in these BOCC meetings, often virtual or by being present, I wear this much passionate expression, yet I value reasoned political discourse. When either party, that is, the member of the public or a member of the BOCC corrodes reasoned political discourse and tends to end not engage rational discussion of the issue, it follows that passionate expression comes gushing forward, as right now. I'm a member of the Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition, and as before, I've asked, and I do now, ask the BOCC to fight for us residents here in Hillsborough County by intervening on our behalf in the TECO base rate case before the Florida PSC to oppose higher rates. Please. Now, my final point. I do not take kindly, when as a member of this noble coalition that I belong to, the Affordable Energy Coalition, I have heard in this forum, our coalition of residents referred to pejoratively as following a Food and Water Watch agenda. Our coalition has its own agenda. And to conclude, as a coalition of community members, we are interconnected at the roots of our local community, which is our beloved community. We have a heart for justice and reach out to you, the BOCC, for peaceful discourse. That's what we want. We are an interconnected community, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Danny Kushmer. Good morning.
Commissioners, staff, thank you for letting me come to speak with you guys, and I want to deliver a heartfelt thank you to you guys. But before I do, it's great to see a fellow East Bay High School graduate done well. So congratulations, Dr. White. And also, as a former senior staffer with the Water Management Districts, thank you for signing in the proclamation recognizing April is Water Conservation Month, very important to us, especially in Hillsborough County. Last January, Pastor Matt Clements of Gibson, First Baptist Church of Gibson, reached out to me and asked me to get a proclamation from the governor to recognize the Independent Showmen's Association in South Hillsborough County. They're 100 years old, and if you don't know, Gibson is called Showtown, USA. So that is where this industry really began. So the pastor was going to recognize them at a service at the church in two weeks from that moment. And I don't think the governor's going to do that in time, but I'll do you one better. I'll reach out to our county commission. So I reached out to Commissioner Wolshtal, and his staff went into action. And within two weeks, not only did all seven of you sign this beautiful proclamation, one of his staff members actually brought it to me down in Riverview so I could bring it to the pastor, because I was going to be out of town. So pastor presented it to the showman on Sunday, January 21st, and they were extremely proud and extremely happy to receive this proclamation. And just wanted to let you know today, it hangs proudly in their club in Gibson. So again, thank you all very much, and really appreciate the timing and the fact that, I know government goes slow, believe me, you did this in two weeks, and that was incredible. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. And if you could state your name, just for the record.
I do apologize. Danny Kushmer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Isabella Sotariga.
My name is Isabella. I'm an organizer with GenCleo at USF, a nonprofit organization that mobilizes the youth to take action on climate, and I'm also part of the Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition that aims to protect Tampa Bay from soaring energy costs and the environmental toll of fossil fuels. I'm also here to speak against the carbon capture pilot program expressed in Agenda Item A15, but since this review is underway, I'm mainly here to address how the pilot program goes against the aims of alleviating energy burden in Hillsborough County. Carbon capture is a false, for-profit-focused solution that would generate more harm than good when compared to improving energy efficiency and resiliency for public housing. These are commonly known solutions that Hillsborough residents want, and our leadership should be recognizing these solutions and paving a way at implementing these solutions. If this can be done, then we'll be well on our way to addressing the threat of climate change, but each day we aren't focusing on real solutions. We're setting ourselves on a backwards path, and we won't be achieving anything substantial. This is why we urge the Commission to intervene on our behalf in the TECO base rate case at the PSC to oppose higher rates and call for multiple accessible indistrict hearings. It has been brought to our attention that we are being tasked with working alongside TECO themselves or having the consumers make smarter decisions on matters related to their energy bill. To this, I say that from the consumer's point of view, it seems like I can't get answers anywhere, because with the new proposed TECO rate case, it's aiming to increase the base rate regardless. This is true for 84% of Hillsborough County residents who are TECO customers. This is true for 84% of Hillsborough County residents who are TECO customers. Even for customers who are taking it upon themselves to improve their efficiency, their bills will actually be going up by 52% with this new rate case. So this is what I have to say about your constituents making the effort to understand their bill, and TECO's efforts speak for themselves. The problem right now with TECO and how it relates to carbon capture project is that they are both fueled by meeting profit margins rather than addressing the real solutions. The issue being that students in this county are turning off their lights, experiencing days without cooling, and sacrificing their quality of life for the sake of the rising bill that only keeps going up. I refuse to believe that this is what is meant to be happening. So seeing as how residents are trying to implement and learn more about TECO, and TECO will not stop the rate hikes, this is why we're asking you right now to intervene on our behalf in the TECO base rate case at the PSC. Please oppose higher rates and call for multiple accessible in district hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Last speaker this morning is Ellsworth Williams. Mr. Williams here.
Good morning, Chair and the county commissioners. I'm Ellsworth Williams. I'll go by Tony. I'm the President and CEO for Veterans Council and Veterans. Next to me is General Karen Nero, a living legend, and also a vital member of the Veterans Council Veterans Board. I come to you this today in time. April has destinations, has two designations for the month of April that we're focused on the Veterans Council and Veterans. One is Sexual Assault Awareness Prevention Month, and the second is Appreciating the Military Child. Hillsborough already has stated that they have the second-largest woman veteran population in the country, and Hillsborough, Florida has the second-largest woman veterans population in the country, and Hillsborough says they have the largest veteran population in the country. What does that mean? Well, if you're a woman veteran, women veterans have twice the rate of suicide than nonwomen veterans, and the reason why is military sexual assault. 8.4% of the military veterans have reported sexual assault. 2.5, and it's increasing, of the males have been, has been, have reported sexual assault. There in our community, living right now in silence and the trauma. Veterans Council of Veterans trying to not just talk about it, but be about it. We just recently had our third annual military sexual trauma conference, which I'm proud to thank Commissioner Cepeda for being one of the guest speakers. You're a strong supporter of Veterans Council of Veterans. I must highlight that in the public from what I hear. The theme of our conference was healing our families and our veterans. The one element that's not taken care of in the community are the families of veterans. VA is not responsible or not chartered to take care of our families or veterans. So if the veteran has a service-connected, I'm talking about service-connected mental health disability, it does not spread to the families. What does that mean? What that means is that if that family has a veteran who was experiencing PTSD or abuse, it becomes generational trauma, and then it passes on years and years, unknown to the families and the community. And we want to try to stop that. We want to say, we believe that if you're going to, if the veteran got this disability for serving the country, then it only makes sense that we also increase it to the families. If we don't, if one of the reasons why we have our readiness is suffering, because the families see that every day, as the Commission talked about what's going on in Gaza, I'll tell you, the families who see that, that actually triggers them when they see the same thing, saying, this is my mom and dad. So we want to encourage that. We want to thank you, Commissioner Cepeda, for supporting Veterans Council of Veterans, and we want to, again, make awareness of sexual assault, awareness, for us, is military sexual trauma. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate your comments. All right, that closes public comment portion of the agenda. Bonnie, we have two items that were pulled for a separate vote.
Yes, the first one is Item A3, and that was for, by Commissioner Wostel. So this is not for discussion, it's just for separate vote. And the second one is A15 for a separate vote.
All right. Can we have a motion to approve A3?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Kemp. Please accord your vote, A3.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Owen and Wostel voted no.
All right, then can we have a motion for A15? Motion, Commissioner Wostel.
Second.
Second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote on A15.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Cohen and Kemp voted no.
All right, now can we have a motion for the remainder of the consent?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote of the consent agenda.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right. Bonnie, want to introduce the time certain?
Yes, the first item, time certain, is a public hearing. This is Item D1. I just wanted to make a comment about the carbon capture when I pulled it. I pulled it for a comment.
It's listed on here just for a separate vote, not for discussion or...
I was very explicit that I wanted to pull it for a comment. I'll just, if I could, I'll just say this.
Quickly, Ms. Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. We will be, right now, while we're not paying, while this is pilot project, we're not paying anything for, we will be asked to do $5 or $10 million, who knows how much, in the future, and we should, this has been opposed by every environmental group we've heard from. We've not heard of one successful project in the entire country. We can use $5 million or more for any kind of other affordable housing, solar panels, trees, I'll do more for carbon capture.
Okay, thank you. Bonnie, please proceed.
The first item is Item D1. This is a public hearing to consider enacting an ordinance regarding the community investment tax. Sam Hamilton with the county attorney's office will present this item. This is a public hearing, and several have signed up to speak.
Good morning, Sam.
Good morning. Sam Hamilton, County Attorney's Office. As Ms. Weiss just said, this is a public hearing on an ordinance providing for the renewal of the CIT and the associated referendum. The proposed ordinance before you includes the changes you made at your last meeting. This hearing was noticed in accordance with law, and we will provide a copy of the proof of publication to the clerk, just for the record. I can provide an outline of the ordinance if you like, or just otherwise answer any questions. Lastly, it would now be appropriate to take public comment.
Okay, thank you, Sam. I will open the public comment portion. We've got 16 individuals that have signed up. The first one is Mayor Nate Kilton. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. I'm here today, Nate Kilton, mayor of the city, great city of Plant City, and spoke before you during the workshop in support of extending the tax. Talked at that time of the importance of this tax to the city of Plant City over the past almost 30 years and the capital improvement projects that we've had there. We later on followed up with a letter to all of you and unanimous support from our commission in supporting the extension of the tax. I'll tell you that there's only so many levers that we have to pull in local government as it relates to the revenue side of the equation. I will put up Plant City against almost any municipality in the state of Florida as it comes to the expense side. We squeeze a nickel so hard, we get a dime. We make the dollar go further, and we have one of the lowest taxing jurisdictions as it relates to ad valorem. But without the CIT, we would be in a position where we would have to make some tough decisions about ad valorem, because we have to continue to keep up with the capital improvements and the infrastructure in this fast-growing community. I can't speak on some of the other items, such as, you know, the school board or the length of time, because that's not a vote that we had, so I can't speak for Plant City on that. But as a citizen, what I'll say is that I would prefer it to be a little bit longer, because I think it gives a little bit more certainty to us and local government on that revenue stream, and it allows it to be bondable. And that's important to me, because we are very responsible in Plant City and like to have that flexibility. But I understand where the concerns are there. And I'll just tell you personally that I think you all landed on a very reasonable compromise at your last meeting. And I think wherever you land, and I don't need to tell you this, all these efforts are exercising futility if it doesn't pass at the ballot box. So whatever you decide, I just hope that you have strong bipartisan support on it, because I think that's going to be critical for it to pass in the future. So thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You forgot to say it's always a great day in Plant City.
It's always a great day.
Thank you, sir. All right, first three speakers, Ron Weaver, followed by David Coleman, and then Kyle Byrd. Good morning, Mr. Weaver.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Ron Weaver, 4403 Westdale Avenue. I was tempted today to propose a compromise of 10% instead of 5% for the schools, but the more I listen and the more I think about it, the more I think that that 5% is not only grossly inadequate, but I believe it's like we're standing in a bazaar, and our wives have found a beautiful necklace, and so the merchant says what he needs for it, and we offer him 20%, and he wraps up both of those precious necklaces and walks off insulted and won't even take the full price for those two precious necklaces for my friend and my wife. The 5% is a grossly inadequate amount, and here's three reasons. And I agree with the chamber for 25%. I'm not going to propose a compromise of merely 10% for three reasons. Number one, the one mil property tax should not be penalized, because it's necessary. The other jurisdictions around us have it for teacher pay, the jurisdictions in which those teachers will flee if we're not competitive on our one mil property tax, and it's only good for four years. If this 15 or better 20-year term for this CIT renewal is going to succeed, I think it needs to succeed by providing that if in four years, that one mil has to be renewed, and for some reason it's a recession and we don't get it, and then four years we have to do it again, and four years we have to do it again. If we miss any one of those three or four shots, it's another Russian roulette. And therefore, we need to put 25% into this 15-years. Second reason, the one-half cent, passed in 2018, for the school facilities is up in just four short years, the exact same four short years that will be in Russian roulette in not one way, but two chambers are headed at our brain, because in four years, the school board will be vulnerable again. There are 200,000-plus students required by the state truancy law to be in class today instead of down here where they should be to look out for the future of this county. Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, the jury on the verdict whether or not this county will or will not fund its most urgent needs, needs to go back to that bazaar in Morocco and go ahead and get those precious necklaces, which are our children and their education and the quality of our education, and not make such a low-ball compromise offer when in fact those kids deserve better than that. On the subject of affordable housing, with all due respect, we need multi- and single-family in order to build more units. You can build more units with multi- because of the land cost with respect to building only single, and with all due respect to those of you who would want single-only, I think you need single and you need multi- when you do affordable housing, which is another urgency. And then transportation, the return of those monies from the state, the $562 million, voted on by the taxpayers, included, I think, like 179 million for lawyers and about a third of it for a tax refund or a tax holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Only about a third for roads.
Appreciate it.
We need more money for transportation. Thank you.
Next three speakers, David Coleman, followed by Kyle Byrd, and then a Jen Flabot. Good morning, sir.
Hi, David Coleman. Thank you, Ron. And I came to talk about money, and I was going to read this, but I'm listening to the mayor, and yeah, I would, I'm not happy with the 10 years. It's got to be longer than that. Anyway, so at the last BOCC meeting, a motion was heard to consider fewer years and a smaller percentage for school building and maintenance. Lip service was given and numbers tossed around, 0, 5, 10% for schools. The overriding need for infrastructure in East and South County was emphasized. Party line vote ended 10% for schools, and a new motion was speed-read for 5%. It was being quickly moved to vote, and a couple members had some questions. Despite the urgency to get the vote over with, the staff answered a question. It would only take another 1-point-something percent above the 5% to get to the projected need that the schools had expressed. The vote happened, and that gets us here. Oh, no, it doesn't, except because there was a TOPO meeting last week. At the end of that meeting, Johnny Wong asked for clarification on a letter, one seemingly from the BOCC staff. It precipitated 30 minutes of conversation where it seemed the BOCC was telling the TPO, it's our way or the highway, that no money was going to urban core, at which point the city of Temple Terrace and the city council of Tampa declared, "The worst roads in our areas are county roads." It seemed the wisdom of the board in place, working for the betterment of the whole county for years, was being usurped by one letter. I wonder if that letter was sent autonomously. It cited the flu presentation, expanding the urban service line doesn't preclude attention to the rest of Hillsborough County. But if it was one person that formed that letter, that would make that person an activist, wouldn't it? Not the will of the board or the people of Hillsborough, but an activist trying to bring all the CIT transportation and infrastructure money to South and East County and not care about the million other residents in Hillsborough. So what I would ask is the board get on page with all Hillsborough County residents, support in transportation issues, and take, and like the 8 million robbed from Hope and placed in sidewalks, do not take millions from our school repair fund, stick it in roads and Wyomma. We should be able to do both. Oh, and when the board wants to name the Selman Expressway after David Gwen when decades of blight have existed on Florida and Nebraska avenues, that's not funny, that's not a joke. So again, CIT, infrastructure money for all residents, and up to 5% to at least 6.5% and cover air conditioning repair costs, because if you don't, that will surely come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Kyle Byrd, followed by Jen Flabot, and then Karen Girroch. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Board. I'm Kyle Byrd from Cousins Properties and also here on, representing the National Association of Industrial and Office Parks. And a lot of our community members work in our buildings. We develop buildings, we own buildings. It's, and our group is, it's where a lot of Hillsborough County works. So this community investment tax, this is a big part of who we are and what's needed in the area. I've been in the industry, commercial real estate, for 39 years, and I can tell you from my entire tenure, after getting out of graduate school, it seems like we've constantly been in this catch-up mode. The funds that you're contemplating today and the term of those funds sorely needed by our community, all of us that commute to work, roads, water, sewer, police, fire protection, everything literally under your purview is needed here. We've been playing catch-up for a long time, and gosh, a great day would be if we could just get to equilibrium on some of these things, and obviously, gang, that's probably not going to happen, no matter how much money you could get approved for however long a period of time. So on behalf of our group, really, all I, my ask is very simple. Please do something, please be thoughtful about it, and try to get as much as you can for as long as you can. You have a lot of people with needs here. Obviously, you've heard some impassioned pleas already this morning. You're going to hear a lot more, I'm sure. But obviously, a lot of things that we have here in the community are needed. You know, the worst thing that could possibly happen, I think, in this case would be to do nothing. So, so please, I just implore you, use your best judgment, move forward with these plans, do something with renewing the CIT. It's very important to our community. We got some great benefits out of the last one. Extend it for as long as you can. This time around, again, I think you'll find it'll just be much easier to work with those monies if you can do something like that. So thank you for your time this morning. I won't waste any more of it. Next up, please. Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Jen Flaboty, followed by Karen Girroch. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having me today. My name is Jen Flabot, and as a concerned parent for not only myself, but for the families and communities struggling amongst record-high inflation, the struggling economy, and also a school board candidate for the Hillsborough County School Board, I'm here to voice strong opposition to renewal of the CIT. At the time when our school board already operates with a $4.4 billion budget, we are now asking for even more money, both through the tax renewal and a proposed millage hike. Yet despite this vast budget, we continue to see school closures, record subpar literacy rates, and a lack of significant improvements to our infrastructure. We must ask ourselves, and I implore you, please, to do the due diligence, why are we increasing our taxes when the issues at hand stem not from lack of funds, but from inadequate management and accountability? We should not be fooled into taxing ourselves further without clear measurable advances in our schools' performances and in the infrastructure. If the school board will not hold themselves accountable, I am pleading with you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, or sorry, Karen Girroch, followed by Jason Futter. Good morning, Ms. Girroch.
Good morning, Board. I also believe that children are our future, but I also would favor eliminating the share of the CIT going to the school board. And the reason, 30 years ago, when the CIT was put on the ballot initially, there was no option for the school board to put, you know, an infrastructure tax. So that was done, there was a need, and there was no other way to address it. But currently, the school board, as you all know, has a half-percent infrastructure, or excuse me, capital needs tax for their needs, and that they also, as you also know, have put an ad valorem tax increase for their operating on the budget in November. So the school board is the agency responsible for funding schools, and you all are the agency that are to secure... agency that are to secure enough funding for our infrastructure and our road needs. The infrastructure tax proceeds also should not be used to build any new stadiums, there should be a prohibition there, or any economic development projects to lure in new businesses. Let's fund our existing infrastructure needs like roads, bridges, sidewalks, and public safety projects like new fire stations with the CIT. Also, please oppose a term any longer than 10 years. Our neighbors in Pinellas reauthorized their infrastructure tax for 10 years just in 2018. How are they able to successfully bond their infrastructure needs in this timeframe, and Hillsborough County can't? There are many needed projects, but none discussed on the dice require a 15-year term to bond. If there are, let's name them. I haven't heard any up there. In fact, I heard last week, or last meeting, that 200 million could be bonded very easily with a 10-year term, and as we know, that is what Lithia Pinecrest needs. Don't forget, there's also the $256 million of illegally gained proceeds that is being appropriated back to the county. That portion is going to relieve the road maintenance backlog. The additional funds will be freed up by this windfall, should go to new capacity projects like Lithia and Van Dyke, which further reduce the need for a 15-year term. Also, a ceiling should be placed on the amount of proceeds that can be bonded out, so the funds are available for any unforeseen projects. The current CIT was heavily bonded out early in the 30-year term, so there was significantly less available when the housing bubble burst in 2008 and all the ad valorem revenue declined. Please be careful not to overreach in this economy. A term longer than 10 years would very likely draw organized opposition to this tax that will already be a hard sell to the electorate that is struggling with high housing costs, high gas prices, and high inflation. The '96 tax vote was held in an off-cycle election with low voter participation. That's not going to happen this time. The laws have changed, which require the vote. Thank you. Please vote for a 10-year term.
Thank you, Ms. Jeroche. Jason Furger, followed by Dr. Davison.
Hi, good morning. My name is Jason Furger. I'm a resident taxpayer of Hillsborough County, and I wanted to come here today and thank you and make a couple suggestions. First and foremost, talk about facts. Commissioner White saw him as I was getting off the elevator. Thank you for bringing up the however many millions and millions of dollars of illegal taxes that were taken from me and all the other taxpayers of Hillsborough County. I have my receipts. I'd love to go down to Cindy Stewart's office and give them to her and get my money back, but we know that's not happening. Second foremost, or first and foremost, only a fool, only a fool votes to tax themselves, and taxation is a theft. So you all are going to vote for this tax probably, and you are going to take money from me unwillingly. That's all it is. Now, I do want to thank you because Hillsborough County schools, the amount should be zero. That is one of the most corrupt organizations that I have ever really, truly looked at. And just to give you a few items, go to one of their school board meetings, there's no more than two dozen armed security guards sitting all along their lobby and in their meeting room, just like you. You guys have two here. One example. The other examples catch me offline, I'd be more than happy to share a ton of them. But we pay taxes already, our property taxes. I paid taxes to come down here today on a Selman. I had paid taxes to fill my car up. How much more do you guys want? It is time for government to live within its means. Now, I can probably support this tax because as a resident of eastern Hillsborough County, you and your predecessors have decided to take almost every single green space along Bloomingdale Avenue. So for me, to get here on a, whatever day of the week it is, it takes me 45 to 50 minutes, and if there's an accident, you might as well say it's an hour and 20 minutes. So that I can support probably, but again, I like the other speaker's recommendation of 10 years. There's no reason for extremely long tax, but the school district, zero. They should get zero. The other thing I wanted to just point out, and I just pointed it out in a parking garage as I was coming down here today, Cindy Stewart has some sort of a little car up there. There's nothing more than a walking billboard for her. Somebody else brought it up about Sheriff Cronister. There should be an ordinance here in Hillsborough County where all public officials can't put their names on buildings, cars, trucks, helicopters, and forklifts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Furger. We've got James Davison, followed by Diane Davison and Laura Tucker.
Yeah, Diane Davison is going to cede her three minutes to me, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Davison, we don't do that. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. I'm here this morning to, I'm for the extension of the CIT tax, but I think it is way too presumptuous and too soon to do that. The tax doesn't run out until December of 2026. There is another election between 2024 and 2026. There are two sessions of the state legislature between now and when the election would have to take place to renew the tax. You're going to stick it on a ballot with a property tax for the school board? That doesn't bode well for it passing. The only reason to do it this early is somebody wants to bond it as soon as it passes. You're going to pass it for Thanksgiving and bond it for Christmas, and that doesn't bode well for it passing. And you haven't done your due diligence. We are now, you, all the research and things you have done are telling us where we are now. You have to tell us where we're going, and you haven't done that. The first thing you have to do is deal with the Indigent County healthcare tax, which is tied at the hip with the CIT tax. That's the whole reason, it's .5. It is .5 and was .5 30 years ago because the Indigent County healthcare tax was passed first, and you can't pass it, they both have to equal no more than 1%. And you can't levy the CIT tax except in increments of .5. The Indigent County healthcare fund, you can levy in increments of .25. So if you didn't pass it this November, and you asked the legislature, two sessions, two shots at it, to allow you to levy the CIT tax in .25, you could actually lower the Indigent County healthcare tax to .25 and levy .75. What does that look like? That gives the mayor of Plant City tens of millions of dollars more. In a 10-year period, you collect as much money as you're talking about doing now as you would in 15 years. You wouldn't have to bond it for Lithia Pinecrest. How to make a mayor happy? It would give the city of Tampa an extra billion dollars. How to make the county administrator happy? It would give them $3 billion more dollars. We have had the CIT tax at .5 for 30 years, or 28 years. Look at the infrastructure and the condition. It's not enough. You know, teenagers, when they get their first credit card, they run out and they spend it right away. It's a sign of immaturity. You have to show us where we're going. You could take these next two years, ask the people where they want that extra $4.3 billion to be spent, maybe decrease their taxes, maybe decrease their water bills, and we'll all be better off for it. And thank you for your time and good luck.
Thank you, Dr. Davison. Diane Davison, do you want to speak? If not, Laura Tucker, followed by Carmen Edmonds, and then Joseph Robinson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Laura Tucker. I'm the president of the Hillsborough County Democratic Public Education Caucus, and I'm here this morning to talk about a bit of history. If you all remember, prior to the passage of the 1996 half-cent sales tax, there were some propositions that did not pass, and the voters said, "We want specifics." And so with 53% of the vote, the community said yes to finance the municipalities and the school board, to finance infrastructure for jails, police, sheriff's equipment, fire stations, emergency vehicles, school construction, and community stadium, transportation improvements, libraries, parks, trails, stormwater improvements, and other facilities. And it took that very specific language for the voters of Hillsborough County to approve that tax. And over the past 28 years, the municipalities have spent $2.3 billion, and they funded approximately 757 projects, some partially, some fully. Raymond James Stadium was built, and we still, we provide the Tampa Sports Authority to manage that stadium. They receive about $9 million annually for stadium debt service and $750,000 for annual maintenance costs. The school district used their $655 million to build new schools, Riverview High School, Shields Middle School, Davis Elementary School. In addition, there were remodeling projects at several high schools as well as transportation and maintenance projects. Fantastic. You all did what you said you were going to do. You gave the taxpayers a list of things that you would do, and you did them. And you've kept your word up until now. Now you've proposed a reauthorization of full two years prior to the end of the 30-year taxpayer approval, and it has been said that the reauthorization would have a better chance of passage during a presidential election year. You have proposed a 15-year half-cent sales tax, and unless I'm mistaken, 95% of that revenue would be spent on roads, infrastructure, and safety, and only 5% of the revenue to the school district. And I presume that that 5% would, again, have to be used for capital projects only. We had a winning formula, and I'm not sure why you want to change it. We all know that the Florida governor, no matter who it is, and the state and federal legislatures-
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Appreciate the comments. Got Carmen Edmonds, followed by Joseph Robinson, and then Avril Stenson. Good morning, Ms. Edmonds.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item D1 for the renewal of the CIT tax. I know this tax has many moving parts and pieces. I know many think we need this to go towards schools, affordable housing, and infrastructure, but I don't think people realize the unintended consequences of rushing to approve something this monumental. A huge consequence is our current tax rate and cost of living already makes it difficult for many families to make ends meet here in our community. I attend meetings throughout our county, and the last two I attended, concerns were raised over this very issue. At the school board meeting two weeks ago, concerns were raised over teacher shortages due to cost of living and lack of pay. I also attended a defense industry breakfast, and the acquisitions executive for SOF AT&amp;L was stating they too were having difficulty recruiting and maintaining staff in our county due to the tax rates and cost of living being so much higher than other defense communities throughout our country. So two of these, so two of the county's largest employers are having a hard time with staffing and retention due to decisions made by our county officials. We have to search for other solutions than just taxing and spending. I'm asking that you wait until 2026 to renew the CIT tax. Do the work to figure out the best way forward in renewing this tax. If you can't wait, then I ask that you, that the continuation of the tax be for only 10 years and with no bonds. If you are going to vote on a 15-year continuation, make sure to spell out very strict limits on what the bonds can be used for, because those have unintended consequences as well. So bonds have consequences, increased taxes have consequences, and it negatively affects the very people who are already struggling to make ends meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmonds. Joseph Robinson, followed by Avril Stenson, and then Ed Nurein, who's virtual. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. The success of the schoolhouse affects every resident of Hillsborough County one way or another. Quality well-maintained schools preserve and improve our property values. Strong schools attract companies with high-paying jobs. Investment in our county's largest employer supports the county's overall economy. Overcrowded schools affect learning, in other words, an unprepared workforce. We need a county commission who takes the fiscal support of the school district as seriously as they do roads, infrastructure, safety, because one without the other is just a naughty winning strategy. Let me say this. No 15% to 20% for the school district, CIT tax will not pass. No 20-year minimum, the CIT tax will not pass. And I'm not rolling the dice today, I'm playing the odds. Reason, Plant City may say, "He all for it." I'm quite sure every jurisdiction is for it, but how you going to bond something if it ain't 20 years? Rookies beware. There was a winning formula. I was here. Hillsborough County wasn't the size it was 30 years ago. That was a 30-year-go deal. This is today. This thing is booming. Here's another one. If you don't, turnout's going to be record-breaking. Why? Bush is on the ballot. Why? Marijuana, weed is on the ballot. Why? You just had another person enter the state attorney's dress. Really going to ring up the Hillsborough County at turnout. You got teachers that are being disrespected by saying, "Don't give them 5%. Give them some crumbs." Teachers is going to destroy you if you're on that ballot. They're going to destroy you, because guess what? See, I'm an arts player and a reasonable, intelligent human being, and I know a little bit about politics and how this game is played. Listen to me. What if the teachers' ad valorem tax passes and your CIT tax fail? You know what you're going to look like? You're going to look like you ain't going to be reelected, because if that happens, that means somebody ain't going to be reelected. There's oppositions about everybody running for office right now. Think about that, especially with a high, you do not want a high voter turnout, but you're going to get one. There's too many things on that ballot, up and down and all around, that's going to cause some headaches. Please, think about it. Don't be stupid. Do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Got Avril Stenson. Is Avril here? Okay, followed by Ed Nurein, virtual, and then Sharon Calvert, virtual. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Avril Stenson, and I am the vice president of Economic Conclusion and Leadership Development at the Tampa Bay Chamber, which has been serving our community for more than 138 years. On behalf of the business community, I urge you to support the renewal of the community investment tax in its original form. For 30 years, CIT has been an important source of funding for our schools and public facilities, with 25% of CIT funds going to schools. Going to a 15-year term and only 5% to education would be a serious blow to Hillsborough County public schools. This is not sustainable for our school district and impacts the ability to obtain bonds to support the growing demands on our schools. Our public school district is seventh in the nation and the third-largest in Florida. The more businesses and individuals relocating to the Tampa Bay region, our school district must keep up with demand. This is an education issue and a workforce issue. The community investment tax is paid for by residents and visitors to our region. Changing it would put even more pressure on the district to rely on property taxes for schools. Approving the community investment tax with anything less than 25% of funds going to schools and a term of less than 20 years is unacceptable. I am here to deliver this message on behalf of our Board of Directors, which voted unanimously on this at our last board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stenson. Ed Nurein, virtual. Mr. Nurein on the line.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about the vote to amend the community investment tax, which we all know funds schools, public facilities, and Raymond James Stadium. In business, certainty is important to planning and investing, and there's a very old expression that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I'd like to encourage you to follow that very sage advice. Currently, the CIT has a 30-year term with 25% of that money going to schools, and the current proposal of 15 years potentially and 5% going to schools is woefully insufficient with the growing needs of our county. Even less palatable is the idea that's been floated around of a 10-year term with only 7% going to our schools. You know, I heard some comments earlier, and I just want to remind folks that taxes aren't just for when it helps a few individuals, it's actually for the greater good. And the 2018 half-cent sales tax, it wasn't done to build new schools, it was done to put new air conditioning units, new roofs, and to address the deferred maintenance that was way and woefully lacking in our schools. If you all can recall, the fact that Florida's public schools have been underfunded is no secret. We know where we rank on teacher pay, but the truth is, for the last- We know where we rank on teacher pay, but the truth is, for the last four legislative cycles, PICO dollars haven't gone to our traditional public schools. So while it might be nice to say that the commission is gonna be cutting taxes here today, the facts are that this is not a new tax. This is something that's already in place and is currently paid for both by residents and visitors to our region. So to propose a term of anything less than 20 years is gonna make it very difficult to obtain the bonding needed to finance these new schools that we want to build and that we need. And it's also gonna shift the burden from visitors and sales taxes to homeowners and property taxes. As you heard earlier, the Tampa Bay Chamber unanimously supported the renewal of the CIT, but only if our schools are properly funded and the term is no less than 20 years. This is gonna provide the certainty that's needed to ensure that our county has the ability to address our growing needs. Now, folks, the CIT is very far from broken, but with these proposed changes, the future of our children will be. If these changes go through, we're not gonna have to point to Tallahassee anymore as the blame for why we can't help our schools and fix our transportation needs. We'll be able to look right in the mirror and blame ourselves. I'll encourage you, please, amend this, no less than 20 years, keep our schools at 25%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nurein. We have Sharon Calvert, which is virtual, and then the last speaker is Denise Herndon. Ms. Calvert, on the line.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sharon Calvert and I lived in Hillsborough County for 40 years and experienced the stadium tax passed in 1996, where Ray J generates zero property tax revenues that county taxpayers have been on the hook for millions to maintain it. Unfortunately, this public hearing was held in this morning when most people are working and not in the evening. The 30-year stadium tax was sold to the public to be spent in five-year increments, but was bonded out right before the big recession hit in 2008 and never delivered what was promised. Taxpayers were forced to pay bondholders instead of funding infrastructure projects. Regarding reauthorization, this board has known the stadium tax was expiring in 2026 for years. Yet you waited until February to start publicly discussing place sitting on this year's November ballot. You should have been discussing this publicly much sooner and developing a plan to inform the public specifically how the money will be spent. But now you've waited to the last minute and trying to ram it onto the ballot with no spending plan. This reauthorization is not ready for prime time. I ask that you either not put it on the ballot this year or reduce the term to preferably seven years, but no more than 10 years. With no bonding, as sales tax revenues are vulnerable and the most risky to bond, and remove the school board's funding because they are placing their own property tax high on November's ballot. The schools should not be double-dipping or, and you should not be having to cover for the fiscal irresponsibility of the school board that has gone on for many, many years. That appears to be a vote-buying scheme. In addition, any reauthorization placed on the ballot must include a reduction in the county's property tax mileage and/or a reduction in county fees that have been raised over the last few years. I believe more due diligence needs to be displayed publicly by the county before putting the stadium tax, CIT tax reauthorization on the ballot in November. But if this board insists on putting it on the ballot, reduce the term to seven to 10 years with no school funding, no stadium funding and no bonding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert. Denise Herndon.
Hello again, I'm Denise Herndon. And just sitting here and thinking about the ways that U-County Commissioners can cut some funding, just in the two properties I've owned, and I've been in my current one for 24 and a half years, they put a hump over my driveway. Four years ago, it'll be in September this year, and it was for my next-door neighbor so that his, the water, stormwater couldn't go into his property. Well, when I owned my first property, I was working with stormwater management because it was on 56th Street in between Fowler and Fletcher, the lowest point. It was the bowl in that community is called Oakbridge Run. And I was told then that there's an ordinance or something that you can't interrupt the natural flow of water. Why is the county, in those two properties, the county has come in and put a hump over the driveways? Those are just two of my one person in Hillsborough County that this is going on. I know Hillsborough County is doing it for more. Stop that. If those people want a hump over their driveway or something over their property to slow stormwater, because that's all it's doing, is slowing it. That's taxpayers' money that can be going for affordable housing, fire stations. The school board, I'm, I'm a firm believer in, in investing in our children, but I don't think any school, school board members should be making such a large amount more than the teachers are. There were two people on the school board that was opposing the one village, they says, "Why put more money into something that's broken?" The same thing here. You want to keep taxing everything, find out what you can cut in your current budget. I've told you two things right now. Sheriff Conister isn't gonna be sheriff all along. Stop putting public voted officials' names on things where it's free advertisement for them, even if you don't want them in the office. Quit putting the humps over, make those individual people pay for it. Solar systems for individual homes. The cost to put solar on a home is so outrageous, but if the county got involved in that, that would be a large carbon capture. I have a very low footprint. My electric bill this month was $36, my base pay. And I do go without lighting because if I don't need to use it, I don't. I haven't turned my AC on yet because I like it warm. I only have AC because of my dog. I like it warm. I know a lot of people can't live the way I do, but thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. That closes the public comment. We'll go into a board discussion now. Commissioner Kemp, you recognized?
Thank you. And thank you to all the speakers who came to educate us today about this. I was, thank you to the Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce, who voted unanimously to keep the status quo, to move forward with the status quo, which I'll remind you is 30 years at 25% for schools. And they voted unanimously. And, and I think because they recognize so much what our desperate infrastructure needs are, but also the desperate needs of our schools in this community. And our schools have been perpetually, starvingly underfunded. Make no mistake about that. And I'll just say that the last time that we discussed this, a couple of weeks ago, you know, I was willing to significantly compromise. But I'll have to say, we're doing 25% for schools now. When it was suggested that we do only 5%, I was deeply, deeply disturbed. I, I mean, I can actually honestly use the word sickened because I don't think that that does what we need to do for schools in our future. I, you know, I agree with Ron Weaver. Our schools are, 5% is a grossly inadequate amount, grossly inadequate. And as he stated, they have the one mil for, for property tax, but that's for teachers' salaries so that we will not be penalized when every county surrounding us has that one mil and is paying their teachers more. We're having a shortage here, a problem with teachers, but they can just go to any of the surrounding counties and, and have higher salaries. Why would we do that to Hillsborough County's future? The school facilities, which was desperately needed, they did not have money for air conditioning was breaking over and over again at our schools. Our schools were in such desperate need that they passed that. They have, you know, I'm sure allocated that to desperately needed projects and have four years left on that. This is the seventh-largest school system in the nation. Seventh-largest, 200,000 students in Hillsborough County are in those schools. Yeah, they have to have a big budget because they have 200,000 students. But make no mistake about it, make no mistake about it, we have grossly underfunded our schools. In Florida, we're 43rd in the nation in teacher salaries. We're 49th in the number of teachers per 100 students in our public schools for funding. 49th, I guess Mississippi is last, I'm not sure. In 2022, we ranked 45th for funding in the country, our schools, our students, our students, which is $4,500 below the national per pupil average. The per pupil average nationwide is $15,500. In Florida, we were at 11,000. Our schools have drastically been underfunded, not only in the state of Florida, but also in Hillsborough County, where we had the lowest impact fees over and over again for decades and decades and decades. We finally caught them up for only the second time in 2019. And we need to do that again because right now, we know that the rate of inflation and the cost of schools, we need to, to keep that up and, and move that. But we, our schools have been grossly underfunded. We've grossly underfunded all of our infrastructure because of our lack of investment in it as well as our lack of impact fees for our infrastructure. So I recognize how desperately this is all needed. And in that spirit, I wanted to move forward. But I'll, I'll put, I'd like to make several motions and I will, I will say, I'll put a first motion forward for, and even though it's not the, what the Tampa Bay Chamber unanimously asked for, but for 20 years and 25% for schools, but I will say this. Anything that is less than 15 years and 15% for schools, I'll be a no vote. I'm just not supporting it. I'm not moving forward. I don't think it will be well-received in this community. I don't think we'll have the support that we need to have. So, you know, that's my bottom line and I just like for everyone to understand that. And, you know, I just cannot see that we could do this to our future, our children, our education system, to do less than 15%. We just, I mean, I think that would be devastating.
Okay, Commissioner Owen.
So I don't know if you want me to, with the, I'll do the first motion, but we can just continue on discussion. But I'll do the first motion for 20 years and 25% for schools.
Okay, first thing I want to, I want to point out, and Christine or Bonnie, correct me if I'm wrong. If we change the, the duration, that would require us to re-advertise. Is that correct?
You are correct, Mr. Chair. That would require a re-advertising in another public hearing on May 1st.
Okay, not, the same does not apply to the school district, but it does for the duration. Is that-
The percentage amount is not specifically part of the notice or the ballot language so that you can, you can, you could change that percentage without having to re-advertise. But the duration would require a re-advertising.
Okay, so just want everyone to understand that moving forward for this discussion. So, Commissioner Kemp made a motion to move forward with, to approve the CIT, or I guess it would essentially be to re-advertise for, for 20 years and then for the school district to, to receive 20% of the portion. Do we have a second for that? Okay, dies for lack of a second.
I'll follow up with 15 years and 15% for schools.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Kemp. Do we have a second? Okay, dies for lack of a second. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yeah, you know, I, I was the one that made the motion that ultimately got bipartisan support. I tell people, I, I think I know I did the right thing when both sides were kind of upset with me. And, you know, the, the whole key to the CIT is getting approved. And I thought that putting the motion together in the way that I did was the best way to get it approved. I will say, if we're opening this back up, I am open to any suggestions right now on lowering the years and changing the terms to the schools. I was a 0% of the schools. And Bonnie, the point, the, the half penny they get, what is that used for? We're not talking about that tax right now.
The half a percent sales tax that they have, they use for capital. So it was predominantly air conditioning and other capital improvements.
Okay, so they, they get a half a penny for capital improvements. So my position was, I was at zero. So, you know, I, I think we made good concessions. It did not get a second, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna tread a little softly right now and sit back and listen. But, but just, just for the record to my colleagues, if this, if this is opened back up with a motion that gets a second, I will be making a separate motion as well. Thank you.
Rachel Wuestel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try and address all of my desires in one go so we don't have to go around the ring too many times today. I just want to point out a couple of things. I made two promises when I ran for office. My two promises were that I would never introduce or support and fight against any increases of taxes to the citizens of Hillsborough County. And I intend to keep that. And I believe that that's accomplished by the renewal of sales taxes that subsidize. This is a feather in the cap that I guess Commissioner Hagan could claim and none of the rest of us, but I looked it up and in the unincorporated Hillsborough, out of 67 counties, we are number 38 on the list of property tax collection in the state of Florida, despite us being the third-largest county in the entire state. And I think that that's something commendable that this county has done that has never been recognized that I've seen over the last six years of watching these meetings. And it's a challenge to continue to fight for those very low property taxes in the suburban and rural areas that more and more every day have higher demands in the level of services that they expect from us when it does come to provision of water and waste collection, trash pickups. So despite me never, ever going to check yes on a ballot box to tax myself, my job was not to come to this commission and act in my own interests. And I recognize that in society, I'm probably only in about 5 or so percent that believes that taxation at its core is theft and that maybe shouldn't exist and that most people do believe in taxing themselves a little bit for an improved infrastructure, improved fire safety, which I also support, improved 911 calls for the sheriff to have good response time servicing almost a million people. He has to be one of the largest police forces in the state of Florida because of the unincorporated area. I've never looked it up, but that would probably be worth verifying. That's why I support renewal of a CIT that funded the fleet for TPD. And I, and I believe that, and I hope the city of Tampa makes that a priority. A lot of people don't know that that went to funding the renewal of their fleet. And those are important parameters that we have to think about when, when you are, when you might be unfortunately the victim in a situation. At that point, you would have hoped that the police can show up in a prompt manner and get to you or a 911 call for your loved ones. For those reasons, my job here is to not act in my own interest to put forward the best, most responsible form of a tax that can be on the ballot box. The great thing is, is that we're not taxing you. We're just giving you an option that we think might be good and then it's your responsibility to evaluate that and you can tell us no, and then we go back to the drawing boards. So, one thing I would like to address is this dynamic around the teachers. Now, I didn't know that it wasn't available. When I, when I hear a citizen say something that might not be all the way truthful, I just consider that as a person lacking all of the information. When I hear a politician doing it, I call it an intentional manipulation of your emotions to garner political gain. So with the fact coming to light that this 2018 that I was going to address tax that they have now didn't even exist in 1996 when this tax was put into place, that tax is their infrastructure tax. They might have needed a backlog of new air conditioners, but that is their new tax that was made available to them by the state's legislature if they needed to catch up on any infrastructure, including the building of new schools. And it's the school board's prerogative on what that priority and usage of that new tax that did not exist when this 1996 tax came into place was available to them. Now, yes, we don't have- Now, yes, we don't have the millage rate that surrounding counties do, but I have gone and verified that many of the surrounding counties do not have the 2018 infrastructure tax on their counties, which is also why we are the third highest sales tax county in the state of Florida. But in the unincorporated area, the trade-off for that is that we have the 38th lowest of 67 counties unincorporated property tax collections. It's too difficult to get the cities. The cities are much higher all over six or so. So with that being said, that's why it's, it's not an apples-to-apples or fair comparison to continue to say that we don't have the millage rate and the surrounding counties do. Well, the, the surrounding counties all don't also have this 2018 sales tax. So that's an important dynamic to go. And I would like to point out that I have brought irrefutable information from the state's Department of Education that I don't understand the school board, the superintendent's position, where, and some elected officials, where they seem to treat charter school teachers like they are not educators. It is irrefutable that their models are far outperforming the public school districts. And this tax right here is not allowed to be used towards charter schools. So this is just another barrier to entry to the success of all of the many highly successful charter school teachers that will be taxed from this, but not, but will not be able to benefit from them being included on an infrastructure tax. So I digress. I will support the 5% that's on there if we feel like, because our goal is to get something, not what our personal beliefs are, not what, how we should act about what may or may not make us re-electable. That is never how I'm going to act in this seat. I'm going to do what I think is best and put forward to the voters for them to make that decision. So with all of those things being said, Mr. Chair, I have two motions. These are not changes, but these are just further clarifications of things we've agreed on, not all in the same way. Commissioner Cohen, you and I are going to disagree on this a little bit. And that comes to 70% of bondability. I do believe that that is the right limit to where we create an opportunity for responsible government. We have already verified that even with a 10-year, which I'm more than happy to support, if we don't believe that's, I believe that lower years on a tax is what will make it more passable, not higher. I just, any conversation about what's right or wrong there is completely opinion. My opinion is that if you give them the lowest amount possible, you don't need to make a tax multi-generational to where, again, I'm 40 getting to voice my opinion for the first time on this tax. My son would be almost 40 for the, getting to voice his opinion on the first tax if we did it for 30 years. I think that that's unacceptable and unconscionable. So I would like to make two motions, Mr. Chair. We discussed this, about 70% of bondability, 30% will be left as pay-go. Commissioner Cohen, you made the argument that we should leave it up to the citizens on that, whether that should be handled in the interlocal agreement, or whether it should be handled in the ordinance. I just simply disagree. I was not elected to only serve the unincorporated Hillsborough County. I was elected to serve more people than 11 governors, everybody in Plant City, Temple Terrace, and the city of Tampa, and the unincorporated areas. And I need to put in protections that I believe is the best option for them. So I move to amend the draft ordinance before us to provide that the county, the cities, and the school board cannot bond more than 70% of their share of the CIT funds. And as a personal note, if this change passes, re-advertising and scheduling a new public hearing for May 1st would not be required if this change was passed.
Second? Okay, so we got a motion by Commissioner Wostel. Second, Commissioner Owen. I got a question, I guess, for you, Bonnie. So this would be, actually, maybe it's for Commissioner Wostel as well, this would be included in the ordinance language, not the interlocal and not the ballot language per se, but included in the ordinance?
That's correct. It would be included within the ordinance.
Okay. All right, so we got a motion by Commissioner Wostel. Second, Commissioner Owen. Commissioner Cohen?
Before I make my remarks, Mr., Commissioner Wostel, let me ask you a question. Is your motion contemplate that the 15% fi, the 15-year, 5% proposal is still on the table? Is that what it accompanies?
The, the current running resolution, that's right.
Okay.
Or ordinance.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that, that clarification. Let me first say that I wish I could have seconded Commissioner Kemp's motions. I, at the beginning of this process, certainly was in favor of a longer term and a larger amount for the schools. But in our last meeting, it became very clear that the board was uncomfortable going above a certain threshold. And after some, I think, very thoughtful negotiation, we settled on a 15-year term and 5% to the schools. And Commissioner Myers, I made an attempt at the last meeting to make it 10%. It failed on a vote. Commissioner Myers made an attempt at 6.5%. That didn't gain traction either. So the 5% seemed to me after the last meeting to be the best we were going to be able to do for the schools. I want to point out to the people that spoke today in favor of leaving the schools in at 25%, that the schools did not ask us for that. The schools came and saw us and actually told us what their needs were, and that quantified out to about 6.5%. So by giving them 5%, we're still getting them 75% of the way to where they, they need to be. In terms of the duration, I have felt since the beginning that a longer duration was in the best interest of the county, primarily because our needs, particularly in terms of transportation, infrastructure, and fire rescue services are so dire. We continue to be the most dangerous place for bicyclists and pedestrians in this country. And if we're not number one, we're number two on every survey. And I think that the bonding, or the ability to bond, and the ability to have a longer term, would give us the ability to do some projects at the beginning that would actually make a real difference in helping us to hopefully save lives and solve some of these problems. The congestion is only getting worse, and the less we do, the worse it's going to get. That said, I am absolutely going to support the motion on the floor. I think that the bonding restriction that Commissioner Wostel is proposing is very reasonable. I don't think that any of the municipalities or us are going to be constrained with that. And I think that with 15 years, we will at least have the ability to make some real strides in improving our infrastructure. I, I commend the board with coming to a compromise. My position today was that I wanted to see what we originally agreed on stuck to. And it seems like it's moving in that direction, and I think that's a good thing, and I'm going to lose my voice if I keep talking.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. I, I do agree with some of the comments that have been made already, but one of the things I'd just like to say, how we as a board compromised at our last meeting. I started out with 20 years and 10%. And when you can count votes, it went to the 15%. And looking at this District 4, when I asked for, just please give me 1 and 1/2%, it was no. So, I mean, it was good for our board. And today, we coming back, and I don't want us to be in a position where we're sending mixed messages to the community, because we want the community to vote for this, this tax come this November. And so we need to be mindful of what we're saying and what we want to change so that the voters clearly understand that we as a board, we are on one accord, and we're not flip-flopping, because it's important. You know, we just experienced that, well, another tax, but going back and forth. And so you begin to hear those same comments in the community. And so I'd like to see everything remain the same. Sorry, Commissioner Wostel, I won't support your motion, but it sounds good. But I would like to make a motion, but it's different. It was one that I brought up at our last meeting, and I still feel that it's not going to change anything. And I'm going to ask our legal counsel, and this is regarding having signage at the, when we have construction projects, that would not change anything, will it?
We would incorporate, if the board approves it, we would of course incorporate it in the ordinance, but it would not require re-advertising or delay.
Okay, so my motion is?
Point of order.
Point of order. We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, okay, well, then I'll come at them. Mine is separate than his.
Yeah, do that, do that.
Okay.
Please. Commissioner Cameron Tapia?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to support the motion made by Commissioner Wostel. However, originally, I did want the 10-year term and the pay-as-you-go all the way, but I know that I would not get, that would not pass. So I'm definitely going to support this motion by Commissioner Wostel. But also, I'd like to mention that the school boards, they've received since inception $1.2 billion. And the reason why, from this tax, and the reason why they received that was so that they could have more money for their operation, operating expenses, which would also help them with their teachers' salaries and raises for their salaries. But they haven't done that. And also, we have, and we, I definitely believe they, teachers should get the raises, but they're just not using the money wisely, obviously, because, as mentioned, $1.2 billion. And we still have the worst-rated schools in all of Florida, the worst, most F and D-rated schools. And also, we know that the, the, the school wants to put the extra mill on the ballot, which I don't agree with that, but I think that maybe if they put it on the ballot a couple of years from now, in 2026, that would give the people time, that would give them time to help get their schools better rated, and then the people would maybe trust them more, that the, they're doing a better job with the schools. And, but I'm, I'm definitely going to support this, but we definitely need to get our schools better.
All right, thank you. All right, so the motion on the floor by Commissioner Wostel, second by Commissioner Owen, which is to approve the ordinance providing for the renewal and the referendum for the CIT at the duration of 15 years, 5% for the school district, and then to cap bonding for both the county and the municipalities at 70%.
Point of order. So we're voting on the entire motion with that incorporated, not just that motion?
I'm just clarifying, this is just one amendment. This is just one amendment to amend that the ordinance before us to provide that the county, the cities. I'll have one more motion after this.
Okay, so this is just for?
Just for that one amendment.
Okay, just for the, maxing the bonding at 70%. Okay, I'm sorry about that. So please record your vote on that.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Myers, vote to no.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. The second one, I'm assuming, even I might need to have more conversation on this, and I'll need clarification on whether or not this requires re-advertising and why it would. But I thought we had mostly consensus from our first workshop, even from Commissioner Hagan, about whether or not this tax would go towards stadiums. But then a comment was made during our last meeting associating the term "public facilities" to the fact of a public facility possibly being defined as a professional sports stadium. So I want to make that very clear in our language. So I'm going to make a, a motion based off of that comment that was made to move to amend the ordinance to prohibit the use of CIT funds for new or existing professional sports facilities.
Second. Or new or existing?
Yes.
Funds for new or existing professional sports facilities.
I remove my second.
Okay, so just to clarify, if that, your intention is to prevent CIT dollars from being used to maintain facilities that we're contractually obligated to maintain?
We have other funding mechanisms that are eligible for the maintenance of public facilities in Hillsborough County, including the TDT and any, any net revenues that are generated by the operations of those facilities. Is that correct, that those funds could go towards the maintenance of those facilities?
Yes, the, certain sense are currently used for the, for the maintenance of the facilities and can be used. Whether they're sufficient or not, I guess, is the other question.
Do you feel that it's sufficient?
I feel that it is not sufficient.
Yeah, I just, for the general public to understand, even just yesterday, I received a briefing on what those quote-unquote "obligations" would be that we're expecting to come up on these facilities, including $110 to $120 million of audio, video, and technology enhancements to the facilities that are operated by billionaires. And these are the kinds of details that I think are missed when we talk about what exactly we're funding with public tax dollars and how it's actually benefiting you. And I don't believe for a moment that anyone would realize that they're voting to tax themselves for audio, video, and technology infrastructure improvements to a public facility that's loosely defined by that in state law. So I believe in the complete prohibition of use for funding of these towards professional sports teams.
All right, I'm going to jump in here. I didn't say anything on the first go-around, but from my perspective, I want to be very clear that I think to prevent CIT dollars from being able to be used for facilities that we are contractually obligated to maintain, to prevent that is simply fiscally irresponsible. And I completely supported eliminating a community stadium or stadiums being built with the, with the tax. Totally fine with that. Totally fine with eliminating TSA receiving money off the top, as is currently used as a CIT. We may not like it. I don't like it, but I want to remind everyone, we are contractually obligated, per the original use agreement, to maintain Raymond James up to NFL standards. To put it into perspective, over the next five years, the number is estimated, I'm just saying, use the word "estimated," to be $131 million. It's our responsibility. Over the next 20 years, half a billion dollars. Think about that. You may not like it. I may not like it, but that's, that's the draw. That's the deal. None of us were around for that. Now, could those numbers, you know, 10% here, 20% there? Yeah. Are we talking about what I said years ago when we went through the last renovation agreement? Are we talking about rooms to go? Are we talking about Ethan Allen? I might use that analogy. But those obligations exist. I will tell you, the Sports Authority CEO will tell you, those numbers are likely very conservative. Because some of the equipment that Commissioner Wostel's identified, they're going to be outdated when the contract is over with, and they're talking about $50 million a pop just for big screen. Because by eliminating this funding source, we have the tourist taxes. It's great. I wish we could use that for everything. The capacity does not exist. Bonnie will tell you that. I'm not even talking about Amalie Arena. I'm not talking about Steiner Field. I'm not talking about future facilities that I know I'm interested in. I know Commissioner Owen is interested in as far as a baseball, softball complex, a potential indoor complex. All of those, we utilize tourist tax dollars first because it's the most appropriate source. But if you eliminate that source, or if you eliminate CIT, all you think you have is ad valorem. Then we're sticking it to property owners. No one wants to do that. No one feels that's an appropriate source. So I can't say it strongly enough to eliminate that. It would simply be fiscally irresponsible. The tourist tax dollar is the best source. I'm hopeful that that, in the perfect world, we could utilize that and not have to ever think about CIT. But if we want to maintain a state-of-the-art facility, if we want to continue, and take all too often, in this situation with Raymond James, we focus on the Buccaneers. Buccaneers, a small portion of this. If we want to have the Kenny Chesneys of the world this weekend, if we want to have the Taylor Swifts of the world, just right online today, and people question her economic impact, they're offering a course at USF on Taylor Swift. Think about that. So if we don't want to have those, that's fine, because they're going to go away if we don't maintain that facility to certain standards. And you'll notice that acts like the Taylor Swifts of the world- And you'll notice that acts like the Taylor Swifts of the world, the Kenny- they only play NFL stadiums that are up to NFL standings. They don't play smaller arenas, or ones that used to have NFL franchises. So I can't emphasize that enough. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Mr. Chair, I will amend the motion if you'd entertain it.
Yes, sir.
But I think that my point was made to the public. I will move to amend the ordinance to prohibit the use of CIT funds for new sport- professional sports facilities.
I can live with that. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Yes, I'm gonna support that motion. But when I originally got in the queue, I was planning to say to exclude all stadiums from the CIT. And because we had- it was my understanding that we did have the tourist tax money was there to be able to take care of our obligations. So if that is not true, that we don't have the funds there to take care of our obligations for the- then I will support this motion.
All right, Commissioner Kemp?
I was going to comment originally, and I agree with you entirely, Commissioner Hagan, is it would be shockingly fiscally irresponsible to not support our complexes that we have now, the assets that we own. And yes, we wouldn't have a place for all of our winning sports teams as well as Taylor Swift. We definitely have to support these facilities. But I am totally in agreement with not investing in any new facilities with this CIT money. I don't think we should be going there. We've made a significant per capita investment in what we have, and I think it's a good one, and we need to protect our assets and facilities. But I support the motion to not go forward, the amendment to- on any other new facilities with this renewed CIT.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. And Commissioner Hagan, I agree with everything that you said. I was thinking about the fact that at half a billion dollars, that's an awful lot less than it would cost if we wanted to get an expansion team in either football or hockey. So the cost if we- to become a major league city is well, well, well beyond that. And my last comment is just that I'm supposed to teach a local government course at USF next fall, and I'm afraid everybody's gonna enroll in the Taylor Swift course instead. So-
I just read it online this morning. Commissioner Myers?
Mr. Chair, I do agree with your comments, because I was making notes and agree with everything you said. And thank you, Commissioner Wollstill, for making that motion, because I do agree with your motion.
Commissioner Wollstill, I want to ask you one question first.
Sure.
I don't know if you specifically said it, but I'm hoping that you're suggesting professional facilities, not a facility that one of us might want to consider.
Well, we've already defined that as a sports complex, not a professional sports team. In our county ordinances, I would just, since the term "fiscally irresponsible" is being thrown around so much, I would like to make clear to the public that I'm in favor of selling the stadiums to the billionaires so that we stop subsidizing them off of the general public's back. So just to be very clear, but we're not there yet. So I'm trying to restrict that as much as possible. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Kemp?
I'll vote yes on this, but that was the clarification I wanted to understand. And I'd make a motion after this to not do the sports complex as well. I just think our investments in these are- that's $115 million when we've told people that we can't do affordable housing, when we can't contribute to the schools. I just heard Wy Mama High School. Instead of 75 million, which I was familiar with during our last fees that we have, impact fee, instead of costing 75 million, it's gonna cost 150 million. So we shouldn't be doing these- also, we shouldn't be funding these sports complexes for 115 million when we have all these other crushing needs.
All right, Christine, did you want to comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for the board's clarity before you vote on this, we wanted to offer some further information. One is that if you were to pass this motion, we do believe it would probably require re-advertising in order to include it in the ballot language. Right now, all it says is "public facilities", and if you're going to limit it in this fashion, we would recommend that that be included in the ballot language, which would mean re-advertising. As an alternative for you to consider, as you know, this ordinance is dependent on the inter-local agreements, that if they're not established by August 1, the ordinance does not go forward. So you would have another opportunity when you do your project lists or potentially in the inter-local to not include any new stadiums. So you do have those options, but I did want you to know that it's our advice to re-advertise and amend the ballot language if you're going to exclude new stadiums.
I don't quite underst- and I don't know if it's you, Christine, or Sam. We're not changing, it says "public facilities", and that's not changing. We're simply eliminating or preventing- first of all, we've already eliminated community stadium, right? Off the initial, the original ordinance. So that in and of itself, I would think, you know, signals that we're not building any new stadiums. And so stadium is out of it. We're saying, what we're saying, "public facilities", and then we want to go a step further, preventing a new stadium from being in there. Wouldn't that be in the- that wouldn't be in the ballot language. That'd be in the ordinance, right?
Well, I mean, the ballot language is actually part of the ordinance.
Right.
But we would recommend that it would be in both because the way the ordinance and the ballot language read right now, Sam Hamilton County Attorney's Office, sorry. The way the provision reads right now, it includes the various uses, and it says "public facilities". So if you have a situation, now, there may be a pro-sports facility that's privately owned that wouldn't be a public facility. But we know of two currently that are pro-sports facilities that are publicly owned by the county. That creates the issue. So you've got a broader use that was advertised, and we're limiting, you know, if the motion were to pass, it would be limiting that use. So it's a question of notice for the public hearing.
Well, Raymond- the original Buccaneer Stadium wasn't publicly owned when we had the CIT, correct?
It was owned by the Sports Authority.
Right.
Which is a governmental entity. It's a special district.
Okay, it wasn't owned by the county, though. So again, I'm failing to- I mean, I'm just a little slow here. But why would that require- we're not talking about the existing facilities. We're talking about a soccer team moving here and wanting to build a stadium, and so, as an example. So why would that require re-advertising?
It's really a nature of you've got a broader use that was in the ad, and you're limiting that use. And so it's not strictly speaking just because it happens to be a stadium. I know there was some discussion, I think, at past board meetings with respect to some of the other use provisions being limited. Those didn't actually make it into the motion. They're not in the draft ordinance. But that kind of would have resulted in the same kind of circumstance. It's really- it's largely a function of the ad that was based on the title of the ordinance as initially directed by the board at the last meeting.
You're not being overly conservative here now, are you, Sam? Which you have a tendency to be sometimes.
Yes.
No, what other-
We've also brought in county bond counsel, and they're also of the same position.
I support where Commissioner Wollstill's going. I just really don't want to have another public hearing, okay? Put everybody through this. So again, one last time, why does eliminating a new stadium- and we're not talking about any other facility-
Right.
Other than a new stadium? Why- the one that doesn't exist now, why would that require re-advertising a new public hearing?
What's been noticed to the public is a whole host of uses.
None of which are changing.
Well, that's where the issue is. If you have a- if there was a new pro-sports facility that was to be owned by one of the local governmental entities, that could fall within the definition of public facilities.
Well, can we change the language to say, to prevent the Hillsborough County from owning a future facility? Can we have that language in there that would prevent that and thereby avoiding the public hearing?
I think, as Ms. Beck said earlier, we could certainly do it in the projects list or the inter-local. But it's really just a notice issue for this public hearing. That's where the concern is.
Commissioner Wollstill, I'm assuming that you prefer it to be a part of the ordinance and ballot language?
Well, I guess what happens if, six years from now, none of us are here, eight years from now, whatever, and then a team comes in and, you know, lawyers for the NFL are extremely crafty. And if they convince somebody, well, you can just change your inter-local agreement. I'm getting a head nod from our attorney.
That is true. The inter-local can be changed just as an ordinance can be amended, but it would- the ballot language is what's going to be the strongest. And I think we have to go on the motions of the board, and the prior motions that dictated this ordinance didn't have the specificity about excluding new stadiums.
Even though it was talked about and said openly during the workshops? It's just because you advertised?
It wasn't voted on specifically.
Wasn't voted on.
Yeah.
The fact that we removed community stadium from the original ordinance and ballot language isn't legally sufficient? Because if we were entertaining doing that, we would have left community stadium in the original?
I believe that was done at the workshop, so it wasn't voted on. And then when we got to the place of making motions, it just was not addressed.
But we didn't advertise community stadium on this go-around, correct?
There's no mention of community stadium in the- I mean-
That's what I'm really struggling with.
So I'm-
I know, I know.
I'm hearing the board's concern here. I know you've worked really hard on this ordinance, and you want it to be final. I think what we're trying to articulate is that if you go forward, you put it, you know, you make this, you make it part of the ordinance, we're just trying to highlight that that is maybe our best advice to amend it. But if you choose to go forward without that, and then maybe follow it up by doing it belts and suspenders in the inter-local, you know, that's just a risk. I mean, the risk you're going to assess is if somebody's going to challenge the ordinance for this. I would think it's hard to predict.
Well, they would only challenge it if a future board tried to use it for that purpose, right?
I couldn't begin to-
Point of order, which they could do anyways. I mean, a new board could come in, renotice, and make changes to interlocals, but-
And the ordinance.
And the ordinance, correct. So I think, Commissioner Wollstill, I mean, I was actually gonna probably second your original motion, but, you know, the thing- we may want to handle that in the inter-local. I mean, I'll support it either way. But, I mean, we're starting to get off on a tangent. I know Commissioner Kemp was just alluding to to the softball or baseball or whatever we come up with new builds. I'm just concerned that we're getting too in the weeds on issues that should be addressed through the separate inter-local agreements. I think we're in the same place either way. Legally, if a new board comes in, they can change interlocals with a vote, correct?
Commissioner, the other thought here is that because we wrote the ballot language as "public facilities", to the extent we do not, as our chair was saying, that we don't own any future new stadiums, professional stadiums, then I think that is a way of avoiding the issue because we don't- we're not- we wouldn't be- it would have to be a public facility in order to receive CIT funds. So ergo, if you never, in the future, end up owning a new professional sports facility, then that kind of gets you to the right- to the same place.
Okay, I withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Commissioner Owen?
The- well, I guess it's a little redundant discussing it, but I just, Bonnie, our agreement with the Bucks ends in 2027, correct?
I think it's at the end of the 2027 season is how it works.
And they get two five-year extensions? Is that right?
They have the right to not request, but to get, correct?
Yeah, I think that's actually maybe up to four is how it works. It's- I believe it's four five-year extensions. But they have to give notice, so it's really could be just five years. They do the full 20 years is how I understand it, but they can give notice that they leave after the first five.
Okay. Well, you're withdrawing right now. Is your plan to handle it during the inter-time of the inter-local? So if that's the case, then I think it's a bit redundant discussing it. So thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
I know we've talked a lot about trying to get unanimous agreement on this. It looks like it's about to go there. I'm not willing to vote for it as it stands now, I'll just say. And what I could do, this board is the one who is voted six to one to entertain 10,000 new homes outside the urban service area. We've been throwing down homes without infrastructure for decades and decades, and we stick it to the schools when we do that. We tell them, hey, we make the decision, we put these houses down, but too bad, so sad if you don't have the resources to do what you need to do for schools in these areas. These areas don't have even buildings that can house students in those areas. I think for us to deny to the schools for dealing with what they're faced now is just very irresponsible. I cannot in good conscience support it. I'll say that. If I could at least get it up to 10%, I might be able to move forward. So I'll make a motion, and that is something that doesn't need re-advertising, by the way. And I really feel like we- it is just- would be stunning to us not to do at least 10%. So I'll make a motion for- to move the schools to 10%.
Our motion by Commissioner Kemp for 15 years and 10%. Do we have a second? All right, the motion dies for lack of a second. Commissioner Owen, you're next, and we do need to have a motion on the floor to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Commissioner Kemp, you're talking about my side of town, I guess, and what the prior board called urban sprawl. You know, I would call apartment sprawl. It's interesting to find that the same people and the same commissioners that were so out to get suburban-type of lifestyle nixed in East and South County would approve these big boxes with 10,000 windows. And to me, that has been the big issue in East and South County, particularly South County with the growth, and ignoring the roads and public safety issues in East and South County in trying to support a surtax that primarily would benefit the city. So I think that's very, very important to carve that out. And Commissioner Kemp, since you're making some good points as to new schools that are needed in South County, and because you made a motion, I'm gonna make a motion. And I don't think this would require any type of advertising either. What I want to move is I move for the 5% CIT funds to public schools voted on and approved by this board that it is directed to be used by public school for new builds only.
Yes, second.
I'm sorry, that one is also one that requires re-advertising because I'll give you an example of why we think that the- right now, it's allowed to be used for any- anything that the statute allows for, you know, as long as it's defined as public infrastructure. That could include new school buses. So if you limit it to new schools, we would potentially have a notice issue and would recommend re-advertising.
Sam, come on up.
Yeah, let me just add two other quick points to that, Sam Hamilton. One, there is one leading case. It's a Florida Supreme Court case that essentially infers that if you change the title of the ordinance as advertised, that goes to the substance. That's debatable, but that is the Florida Supreme Court. And that's what's sort of driving part of what we're saying. In addition, the statute that authorizes this tax-
If, if you've got uses, but you've got a broad category of uses, and then you limit one of them and don't say that limitation in the ballot question, it could create an ambiguity that could be debated, and, you know, someone could potentially file a claim. Doesn't mean they, they'd win in the end, but that's sort of the basis for this, those two points.
Well, I mean, since, since we've been making motions, and I think I've been crystal clear on this, that we're going down a dangerous road, and there's been multiple, multiple motions made, and hearing the pleas of my colleagues, and specifically Commissioner Kemp, on the, the lack of new schools that are needed in South County, I'm going to move forward with the motion.
All right, so the motion was as advertised for a duration of 15 years and 5% for the school district. That's by Commissioner Owen. Do we have a second?
New builds only, asked for 5% for new builds only.
5%, for new builds only, which will require re-advertising and another public hearing next meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wosel. Commissioner Cohen?
I'm a little bit confused as to where we are now, because I, you know, first, first of all, let me just say that, Commissioner Kemp, I would have supported your motion for the 10% per schools, but I made the same motion at our last meeting and it failed. So I, I, I felt that we were, we were moving in the direction of wrapping this up. I was under the impression that we already voted on the 515. I guess, I guess we haven't. I guess we still have a final vote. Commissioner Owen, I am totally in line with the spirit of your motion. I think that we definitely expect this 5% to be spent on new schools only. The school board gave us a program, whereas they showed us that they need even more than this just for new schools. So, but I'm very, for the same reason that I think the last motion was withdrawn, I don't think advertising this again and having another public hearing is in the best interest of moving it forward. I do want to just, you know, point out to everybody that we have already gotten on the train of putting water and wastewater infrastructure in South County to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars. And if we don't follow up with the same commitment to our roads and infrastructure and to our fire rescue and public safety infrastructure, we're, we're going to have, have put a huge burden on future water rate payers and wastewater rates if, if we don't have all of the rest of the infrastructure in place. It's, this is not an either/or proposition. There's a lot of moving parts, and, you know, I am concerned that the amount to the schools isn't larger. I think that that is, is very unfortunate. But I'm also afraid that it will, if we try to get too aggressive, we'll end up with nothing. And nothing is not a good answer either. So again, I'm going to reiterate my support for the original motion, the 5% of the schools, the 15 years.
Commissioner Myers?
Need to ask a question, either Bonnie or Christine. When the school board presented their plan to us, they have identified the schools that they wanted to build with the renewal funding, which is nine schools. Could that be included in the interlocal?
Yes, and that's a good point, Commissioner Myers. You will have another opportunity to make sure that you are pleased and ready to enter into an interlocal based on the school project list that they submit before everybody finalizes it. So if they submit, that would be an opportunity for no vote on the interlocal. So it, it is, there is still that potential for you to ensure that it's only for new schools, for this board to ensure.
And you're saying, may I, so you're saying we can literally spell out the schools and the interlocals?
Well, the way this is set up is that each entity that receives funds has to approve a project list, and then everybody shares their project list, and then you all have to approve an interlocal. So if you're not, you don't get to do their project list, but if you're not happy with their project list...
Can reject it.
You cannot approve the interlocal and nothing goes forward. Obviously, it would take a majority of the board.
All right, and I don't want to speculate, but in my conversations with the school board members and administration, I think they know what's at stake, and they would put forward what they know would be approved.
All right, we're going to have a back-to-back withdrawal of a motion, so I'll, I'll withdraw my motion, and I sure hope there's not any more motions, because my next one's going to be dealing with the years, so thank you.
God, Commissioner Cohen, did you want to move forward with the, the original?
I'd like to move the original motion forward, what we voted on last week, exactly as articulated with the addition of Commissioner Myers' language about, well, was that something you need to do separate? That could be included, couldn't it?
It could be included. It just hadn't come up yet for a vote, so I wanted to make sure nobody forgot it.
Why don't I let you amend my motion? How's that? I'll do the original motion.
I'll be happy to.
Okay.
Okay. So I move to amend the ordinance before us to require signs for the CIT-funded construction projects advertising that CIT funds are being used for the project. So that just putting signage, making the public know the CIT dollars at work if this passes.
All right, so that's going to be the, the 15-year and the 5% in that, that's your motion, and that's your second by Commissioner Wosel. Okay, Commissioner Myers, anything else you need to say? All right, Commissioner Wosel?
I wanted to be clear that you're including my approved amendment in your, because you said...
Believe that already passed, that's already done.
Yes, absolutely. And, and the only, as I was going to point out, is we could control the list of what the schools, so...
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, great discussion. Motion, Commissioner Myers, second, Commissioner Wosel, please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Hagan and Kemp voted no.
All right. Bonnie, a couple more items?
Just a few. The item is, next item is item B1. This is to award and execute a progressive design-build agreement regarding the One Water South Wastewater Conveyance and Treatment Project. George Cassidy is here to present this item.
Good morning, George.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners George Cassidy, Public Utilities, and item B1 is to approve the progressive design-build agreement with Garnet Construction for the South Wastewater Conveyance and Treatment Project. As you know, this is a very large project. It has a not-to-exceed value of $671 million, and we're not just talking about a wastewater plant, we're also talking about 22 miles of pipeline and also a, a large pump station that'll be responsible for moving water to that plant. Before you today is Phase 1 of this initiative, which is a preliminary engineering and planning effort with an approximate cost of $3.6 million. Our approach will be to complete the initial data collection and the associated preliminary work, and then we will, this will allow us to go into defined basis of design and also final design effort. The subsequent design efforts will be coming back to you for consideration and, and for your approval. The minority goals for the entire project was established at 14%, and the Garnet team has committed themselves to achieving this goal. This is a minimum goal, and we're hopeful that we'll achieve more than the 14%. This item also includes a fiscal year 24 budget amendment resolution to realign $8.4 million within the capital program for water resources to fund this item, as well as priority projects that are already in the, in the program and in your backup. This budget amendment will result in a net zero change to the adopted 24 capital program. Staff recommends approval.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. Just after George and Ken, I've expressed my concerns about the MBE goal dispensed set for 14%. As I said to you all earlier, I felt the goal is very low, and I asked that you all kind of worked with Garnet to see during the construction of the project that this goal could be increased, because it's, it's very low. It's real low. And that was my concern when this came up month before last, when we was voting, because I felt the 14% was low then, and I thought we had the opportunity to have a conversation with the contractor to see if he would be willing to increase the goal without going out for bid again. So I don't want to see the project goes out the bid, but it is a concern that the percentage for this particular project is extremely low, in my honest opinion.
And thank you, Commissioner. And I've had personal conversations with the Garnet leadership, and they, they know how important our MBE program is to us, and it's important to them as well. They've expressed that to me, and they have made a commitment that they will try to go much higher than the 14%. 14 is the floor. The objective will be more than 14.
All right, can we have a motion?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Wosel, second, Commissioner Cohen.
And I...
Commissioner Kemp?
I just want to thank you, Commissioner Myers, for raising that, and I think that's a good way to, to make this point. Thanks.
All right, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
All right, Bonnie, next item.
The next item is item F1. This is an appointment to the Diversity Advisory Council. And Glenda will take you through this one appointment.
Today we have the Diversity Advisory Council for appointment. There is two vacant positions. The first one is African-American. We have seven applicants. Please choose one. Commissioner Hagan?
Five and eight.
Commissioner Owen?
Two and one. Two and one?
Two and one.
One from each category. Oh, I'm sorry. One from each, I'm sorry. So two and eight.
And eight. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Six and eight.
Commissioner Cohen?
Six and eight.
Commissioner Myers?
Five and eight.
Commissioner Kemp?
I'll choose five and nine.
Commissioner Wosel?
Two and eight.
All right, five and six retired?
Yes.
So we need to revote on, on those two?
I thought there were five votes for five. I mean, I'm sorry, three votes for five. Yes.
But nobody has a majority. We need four. So we will need to take another vote for number two, number five, and number six. Commissioner Hagan?
Five.
Commissioner Owen?
Five.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Two.
Commissioner Cohen?
Five.
Commissioner Myers?
Five.
Commissioner Kemp?
Five.
Commissioner Wosel?
Two.
Okay, can we have a motion to confirm?
Move for approval.
Number five and number eight. Okay, motion to confirm, Commissioner Myers, second, Commissioner Wosel. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next item.
Thank you. We have one item that was pulled from consent for questions or discussion by Commissioner Wosel. This is item A7. So Cheryl Howell will present this item.
Good afternoon, Cheryl.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, yeah, I thought it was still morning. My name is Cheryl Howell, Assistant County Administrator, and I'm here today to present item A7. And this item is for the University Area CDC, and it's to approve and execute the Community Development Grant Cares Act Public Facilities Grant Funding Agreement with the accompanying form of the mortgage promissory note and lure between the Hillsborough County and the University Area CDC, which was a successful proposal under RFP 24148 in an amount not to exceed $303,77 to assist the agency with preparation, prevention for the spread of future pandemic disease. This CDBGCV public facility funding is made available through HUD, through the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, approved in the Planning Year 2324 Annual Action Plan and substantial amendments. UACDC will receive $303,77 for eligible upgrades to the property located at 13704 North 20th Street in Tampa. UACDC will also record a mortgage note and lure with a 20-year term to secure the county's funding. The agreement will be funded with the $303,77 from HUD-CDBGCV-FY24 grant budget.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wosel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is more simple, but, you know, we have to get the presentation. This is way too long to read in the record, but it's from the U.S. Congress Oversight House Committee on January the 10th, where, and also I'll just quote a couple of things here instead of reading the whole thing in. Directly, this, this item is for, throughout the backup, talks about improvements of social distancing. This is the interviews of Dr. Anthony Fauci, where he testifies that the six feet apart in any social distancing recommendation promoted by the federal health officials was likely not based on any data. He characterized the development of any of these social distancing guidances by stating it sort of just appeared, and I found that extremely critical in regards to how we're going to, we heard of all of the economic struggles that members of the community are having, and we're going to talk about our decision to prioritize $300,000 more of taxes to astroturf for something that the federal government themselves is acknowledging was a complete farce and has testified under oath to the United States Congress in January. So I just think that we need to go back to our entire process of how we're selecting these and finding something that will be simply more meaningful and impactful to the community than new astroturf with people's tax dollars. So, thank you very much.
All right, can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Myers, second, Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Owen, and Wosel voted no.
All right, Bonnie.
Future issue items, this is the final, the final item, sorry.
Any future issues, anyone? Going once, going twice? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.